Mr. Knowles?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. O'Day is absent. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Amer?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 11th, 2018. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. There are, there's not a presentation on the agenda, but I do have one I want to make. I was trying to get the. I went to the freeholders' meeting last week to accept our fake check for $5,000 for a grant towards our mural that Olivia, Christine, myself, and Jillian worked on this grant. And we were, actually, there were seventeen grants awarded. And we were one of the largest. There was one that was, I think, eighty-five hundred, and one that was fifty-five hundred, a couple of fives, and the rest were like fifteen hundred, five hundred. So we got one of the larger grants. So that was great, and thank you, and I wanted to give this.
From whom?
It's from, uh, the question. Somerset County, it's the board of frozen, frozen shoe?
Frozen. The frozen shee holes.
Freeholders. But it's the Somerset County Cultural Heritage Commission that gives out the grants. So I wanted, I asked Olivia to come here and get her official check because it is especially. Fake check. There you go. You guys are amazing. I don't know when you get the real check, but.
Oh, I can't just like put this in the.
I don't think it'll go in there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So that was really, and that's, that's the first time we've ever gotten one, a grant from them.
We should say that this is for our mural project.
Yes.
Correct.
I did, I think it was. Did I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yes. So, and downtown Burnsville is kind of our whole overseer of that project, so terrific. Thank you. Minutes. I have a motion to approve September 23rd.
I'll move.
Let's do it separately.
Oh, okay.
We need a voice vote.
A voice call.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? October 15th, motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained, obviously. I wasn't there.
You aren't there. Yeah, I don't think you have to.
You don't have to.
Okay. Now we are going to have an open session, so if anyone from the public has something they would like to say, please feel free to come up, give your name and address, and. What else?
We're three minutes.
It's a three-minute time, and please keep your comments respectful, and we will respond soon. Anybody? Olivia, I said your hand go up first, so I'll let you come up.
I'm here. Olivia Manning, 13 Orchard. I just wanted to publicly thank our police department. Unfortunately, no one is here from there. Usually someone is here. Thank our police department for all the additional resources they provided for our trunk or treat on Saturday night. Apparently, there were people crossing the road left, right, and center because there were so many people there. So I, I want to thank them for giving us extra resources and a, a crossing guard, and just even being there and supporting everything. So I just wanted to thank them. And then, of course, there's a long list of people that I thanked on social media already, so I'm happy to share that with whoever wants it. I'm not going to stand here and do that. But thank you to everyone who attended and participated. It was an awesome, awesome event.
It was. It was really well done. Thank you.
I think there were thousands of people there. I don't even know how many.
I know.
It was outrageous, but.
And it was a lot of organization and.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you. Thank you. But thank you to our police for, for sure. They did a lot for us, so thank you. That's all.
Alan, I saw your hand go up.
I'm Alan Shakt. I live at 190 Peach Grove Drive. That's, I've also fronted on Campbell Road here in Burnsville. My history goes back to 1961. I came here with my parents to find land to start a family horse farm. We're the place that has the horse farm at the bottom of the mountain, and also the split rail wood fences. You know, I worked to maintain it along with my wife Carol. And I'm here this evening to lend my support to, you know, the deer management program. It was passed a few years ago, and it's been working very successfully. I guess I found out that it has been approved at the start, you know, in the beginning of September, for when the deer hunting, for bow, bow hunting occurred. I would encourage you to, you know, pass the program so that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Real malfunction.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so that the program will continue, and also maybe set it up so that it automatically renews. If there's an issue, well, then you can address it and then have citizens like myself come in and talk. There are three components that, my wife and I both have Lyme disease, so you're talking about public health, public safety, deer jumping out in front of people driving and hitting the automobile. Just in the way here, there was a doe in my back driveway when I left, and then when I was on Robling Road near Ravine Lake Road, a buck ran right in front of me. Fortunately, I was going slow enough to, you know, stop. And then the third component is the, you know, the environmental aspect. You know, we have, or I've seen the degrading of the forest. I rode throughout the mountainous area of Burnsville on the Bridle Pass when I was a youth, and the trees are not like what they are, what they were back then. I encourage you to, you know, work with the green team to, you know, get it passed for as many properties as possible. And also, on the website, it was confusing. It showed that it, the program had been passed for this year with the four borough properties, and also Little Hook Farm, which is near where I live. And then, but yet, you know, I saw on the agenda tonight, and also two weeks ago, that there was a hearing for it. So, you know, I came to voice my concern. And I think from that aspect, you know, I would, it's a bipartisan issue. You've had Lyme disease, you've had crashes, even if, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you've been in a car accident with a deer, you don't want to have it happen to anybody else. And I hear again the environmental aspect. We're fortunate to be near the headwaters of the north branch of the Raritan River, and also the Passaic River. And, you know, if we don't do our part, who's going to do it? When you go to the Burnsville Borough website, you see four things that you can do in Burnsville, and they're all outdoor activities. You know, like the Audubon Society, going to the Cross Gardens, walking, you know, on trails in the area. So, you know, this is an issue that hits children. You know, they say, let's do it for the kids. It hits adults. It helps hit senior citizens. So, you know, it's, you know, it's all the citizens.
Yeah. And I think we, we approved the deer management. I think what we're changing is, we took out one little four-acre piece that was up by Laurel Way. And then tonight, what we're doing is adding the two pieces we just bought on Claremont that go into Peter's Track. So it is confusing because it showed up on the agenda a number of times, but we supported it, and it's in place. Where's?
Right there.
Ed, right?
Yes.
It's in place, right? The deer management? Right, but we're just adding those two Claremont properties.
What about the property on 202 that's near Tunne Lakes?
We haven't finished.
When you close that, I would encourage you to put that in there.
We, we plan to. We just haven't closed on it yet.
Because the main corridors, you know, like 202, people driving through there, they're not going at the, you know, sub-speed. And also on Claremont County Road, it's nice that they had two extra properties there because the deer are always crossing in that area.
They are. Yeah, great. Well, thanks.
Thank you for hearing my concerns, and my wife Carol couldn't be here this evening, but she shares the same feelings. As almost six decades of being familiar with Burnsville, you know, you want to see it continuous, a bucolic, you know, prosperous area. This is more of that.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Your bet.
Does anybody else from the public? Steve?
Steve Reynolds, Stevens Street. Regarding the contaminated soil on Stevens and Woodland, the notice says that Madaluna Construction is now going to install the topsoil in the borough. I'm assuming he's buying the topsoil, so I'm trying to, I'd like to know how that works financially when a contract was awarded to somebody, and now we're paying as a borough to have somebody else finish the work.
We talked about this briefly in public.
Public works, yeah.
John, you want to explain that a little bit?
Sure. The cost for installing topsoil is going to be deducted from money used owed to JTG. And per, I believe the council discussed this at their last meeting. We agreed we're going to split the cost of the soil with JTG, and that will be deducted from their, from money due to them also.
So is there retention money that's being, like, paid?
There is. Some of it is retention money, some of it is money that has not been paid for pay items on the job.
Okay. I just want to circle real quick with this whole piazza.
I think, wait, just one more thing. I think, just to add to what John was just saying is, one of the reasons that we decided to take this approach, I think the council discussed this during the public session last week, was to try and expedite the paving of the road before the winter comes, right? So we took this approach to try and, and make it as painless for the residents, you know, recognize that it's already.
But we're netting a zero as a borough, and taxpayers, it's the money that's coming out of our pocket too.
Right. Yeah, we're not picking up.
We're taking it out of the, of the, of spending from other road accounts that we had.
Other road accounts, meaning?
There were underruns on other budgets.
Okay. So we're not exposed, we don't have exposure as a borough of any, any extra monies, other than, I guess, the J and S or the money that we had to pay for the environmental consultant.
Right.
So I'll just say real quick, I checked the specs, the big specs. There's no wording in this, in this contract about clean soil, New Jersey DOT approved topsoil in the bid. So that puts us out for exposure as a borough right off the bat. The submittal that Farrar approved for the soil with no location specified other than Nature's Choices Office is egregious. You know, the fact that they approved this soil as a middle. On Line Mount Road, there's an inlet that tied in the crown of the road. And Farrar Engineering is responsible for that road and for the inspection of the, of the condos behind the church. Farrar Engineering built the borough in fifty-two hours for curb and sidewalk inspection for that project, and, and did not inspect any of the water of the hot box that is there in front of the church. So they built this fifty-two hours for curb and sidewalk, which the whole job would probably take two or three days anyway for a contractor. And there wasn't one inspection for the water that, and the hot box, which the resolution states for that project, that there's been, all the utilities are to be underground. So my question is, these are major issues. I, I don't understand why we're keeping Farrar Engineering as, as a borough engineer. Like, this is, this is crazy, and I'd like someone to explain to me why we are continuing to have them as a borough engineer. Anybody? I mean, if they exposure along with the soil by not having any documentation in the, in the spec book about bringing in, having to have New Jersey residential clean tested soil to our borough is ludicrous. It's ludicrous.
I think that might have been at one time oversight. I don't think we've had that in the past. Their, their track record for the amount, Doug, how many years have we been working with them?
Sixteen.
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years.
That's great. I mean, if they did their job for sixteen years, but when you don't do your job and you screw up this, this many times in just a hundred and fifty-foot radius, it's crazy. In the real world, you lose your job when you don't do what you're supposed to do. And these are many things that they haven't done.
So we did a thorough review of Farrar Engineering involvement with this particular project. We had three different, three different public works meetings where we talked about the different aspects of it. We also asked the borough staff to go back and look at Farrar Engineering and make a recommendation to us going forward. We have a letter. Is it, has it been sent around to everybody now?
Yeah.
I didn't see if it was in this agenda package or if we sent this separately to the.
I sent it via email.
Okay. So the recommendation after reviewing it was that Farrar Engineering's involvement, while not perfect in this instance, we've addressed the issues that we feel that they were responsible for. There's some of the things that you're talking about that you're calling their responsibility, which we deemed that was partially the responsibility of the borough. So we're addressing this situation. We're trying to keep the, the people on the street informed. The recommendation from the staff is that, on balance, we should keep Farrar Engineering on. So we looked at it. We've investigated it. We have a recommendation from the staff. The recommendation's in front of the council. The council can make a decision. It was a recommendation in the, in the discussion.
They do have two more years on the contract.
We also had discussions.
We should get along the contract. I mean, as, as elected people who are out for our best interest, and when you run and you campaign, you know, I'm going to do good for Burnsville, do good for people. This is, this is a clear shot of, of you doing something and getting rid of a consultant for our borough that we pay a lot that is not doing what they're supposed to do.
Well, I, I think the way you're characterizing it is not necessarily the way that the data supports what you're saying. So if you'd like to review the recommendation, if you'd like to look at any of the data that we, that we looked at, I think.
I looked, I read the whole spec book. Did you guys? It doesn't say anything about bringing in New Jersey residential clean tested soil or providing documents.
We talked about, we talked about the specification for the soil, Doug, the specification for the soil that we're, that we're putting forward is consistent with.
DOT.
DOT requirements.
You're saying going.
And we looked at going to a more stringent, a more stringent requirement above and beyond what we're already doing, which is DOT, New Jersey Department of Transportation standards that we're following. We looked at going above that standard, and we felt that it was cost prohibitive to the taxpayers of Burnsville to go above and beyond that standard. So we looked at that.
The standard in the state for any construction is to provide documentation that the soil coming in is New Jersey residential clean and has a chemical test. This submittal that's approved.
Let me just, I'm sorry, let me just clarify. Are we meeting the New Jersey Department of Transportation standards? DOT standards?
With our prior contracts?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a standard that's, that the DOT.
The DOT standard. So I'm, I'm confused because you're saying we're not meeting the standard, but I'm hearing we are meeting the standard.
In this spec book, it doesn't specify that there needs to be, there needs to be a New Jersey residential clean sample, and the soil has to meet New Jersey residential clean standards. It's not in the spec book. I read it on Friday. I read the whole thing. The spec book being? Farrar Engineering's spec book for the bid for Stevens and Woodland that project. So we're following the NJ DOT standard. That's what we have in our spec. It does, it doesn't even say that for New Jersey residential topsoil, or for New Jersey DOT.
Two different things. NJ DOT standard and New Jersey clean. Two different things. Yes, it is. And we've, we've talked about in future specs possibly upgrading our standard to possibly meet, to have New Jersey clean. Because this issue is not unique to Burnsville. If you've read about, read the papers, other towns are starting to incorporate New Jersey clean and other ordinances into their codification because of the issues that people are having with soil.
The spec book doesn't state that this topsoil has to be New Jersey DOT approved topsoil. There's nothing about soil in the entire spec for this bid. Do you know that?
Our, our specifications by reference reference the DOT spec. It doesn't, yes, they do.
Okay, guys. Yeah. This is a, a public session to share your opinions, not necessarily to.
So fifty-two hours for inspecting for ludicrous, ludicrous. Not inspecting any of the water for the hot box that isn't supposed to be there? Ludicrous. I mean, I, I don't know how many times somebody has to screw up for, you know, I guess we're in the Wild West in Burnsville. You can do whatever you want for construction. There's no consequences in there.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else want to speak from the public? All right. We will close the public session. Okay. So we are continuing the public hearing on an ordinance prohibiting marijuana facilities and supplementing and amending Section 12 of the Borough Land Use Ordinance entitled zoning.
Mayor, I was talking to Anthony after we started.
Yes.
And the problem is this has to go back to the planning board.
Right.
Because it's a running ordinance, and they have thirty-five days to act. And I'm not sure they will leave again before November 12th. So we thought it may be worthwhile to continue the public hearing through December 9th, which gives them their full thirty-five days. I mean, that'll be the final. And that way we're going to have to carry a meeting to meeting if they don't get back to us by the next meeting.
Is it, what part of it? Is, is, is the rest of zoning?
Sign.
Can we strike that and amend it later on, and just to keep us moving forward? Because I feel like this is, like, you know, roundtable day sometimes.
I agree.
Can we just, can we strike the zoning part? Can we revisit that as a separate addendum, amendment to it, like, at a later date?
For the sign?
Yeah. Can we strike that altogether? I mean, not a bad idea, but just in the interest of time.
Well, you'd still, if we strike it now, then it would be the second meeting in November to vote on it?
That's, that's a good, a good. When's the next planning board meeting?
I think you're right. November 12th, as I recall.
Does it have to go to the planning board if you strike the sign?
Remember, there's some other changes we made since they last had it. I think, but the ordinance is controversial. You probably should be cautious.
Isn't there a second meeting in November? Did we break it? The last meeting in November?
November 25th, I think it is.
Yeah, the, the council meeting in November is the 12th, which is Tuesday, the 25th of November.
I'm sorry, council or planning board?
Council.
So when's the planning board meeting? Do they make it before November 25th? I know they made Thursday night, but they don't.
November 7th.
Well, the planning, the planning board schedule's working. Meetings that generally don't occur, they're, they're not required. So we only have a, the monthly meeting that the planning board is. I, I have to check with Frank Matola about.
Twenty-first. Well, let's.
Probably the 21st, because the 28th is Thanksgiving, so it'll probably be the 21st.
November 21st, it sounds like.
Well, let's, let's.
If that's the case, why don't we make it November 25th? And I understand your frustration. I was, I was to get it off my.
Uh, let's not make it.
No, let's make.
There's a revised version, but.
No, you can.
Let's do it the December meeting so that we can make sure it gets done, and there's no more, they have enough time.
Because if they don't get back to us in time, they won't have to carry it again.
Right. And so then we don't have to keep putting it on the agenda until then. It'll just wait till we get back.
So December 9th, Jack?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was.
All right.
Just to be safe. More than thirty-five days.
The planning board will take it up, so we have like the.
Well, if they don't act within the thirty-five days, then it's deemed approval.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and that gives them time to review it and get back, you know, and send us their comments, and so now it won't be on the agenda anymore until then.
That's right.
But do, do we need to finalize the wording tonight, though? Because there were some wording changes since our last meeting.
There's a revised version on your desk tonight.
Yeah.
The only change since the last meeting is I added Mr. Hammond's language about.
That we approved last time.
And Anthony, this evening, before the meeting sitting here, I moved it to the end of the section. So it's clear it applies to the CPD vendors as well as to doctors and pharmacists.
Is that thirty-five calendar days or thirty-five business days?
Calendar.
Calendar day.
Yes.
Well, we also added the.
The CBD.
Cannabis oil.
Right.
Cannabis oil information as well, right?
Right. Yeah.
That's why I say I think it's safer to send to the planning board. We even have a different signage out.
Right. But we were okay with the sign language last time.
This, this version, this version on, in front of us doesn't have the amount in milligrams per dosage or amount in milligrams per container.
I did that sitting in the desk.
It says, "Only retailer who offers products for sale must also provide accurate certificate of analysis."
The final version will have that language.
So the, so the, the rest of that paragraph, though, is supposed to also say that the certificate of analysis explains the amount of milligrams per dosage that the person would get, as well as the milligrams in the container. So the entire amount of whatever it is they're selling. This, this would go towards making sure that we don't have counterfeit products in our town.
Right.
Which the counterfeit products have been, been illustrated in the, in the news, anyway, as being problematic and, and quite dangerous for people. So I think the, the point of the certificate of analysis is to, to try and prevent those things from getting into the retail stream.
The, the final version will have it. I, I thought, like I said, I tried to do it sitting here on my.
And then for my clarification, I thought the signage discussion, the, the last sentence says, "Professional and medical nature of the facility." I find that confusing because if it applies to medical facilities as well as all these other facilities, that's a little confusing. The last.
Is it only supposed to apply to CBDs?
Well, I thought it was supposed to supply to any, well, I mean, since that's the only thing that's, that this ordinance is allowing.
That's the only thing that's going to be allowed at the soul.
Right. So that's. Basically, it's like anybody in the neighborhood who's selling CBD can't put marijuana weed on the sign. That's all.
Okay, so it would just be at the end of the CBD. It wouldn't apply to doctors and pharmacists.
Right. That's, that's.
Well, I mean, do, don't you want it to apply to the doctors and pharmacists?
Well, I don't.
It would, it would apply to whoever's, we don't want it to be misleading. That was the whole idea, is you don't want it to give a false impression.
That they're selling marijuana.
Or do you want to confuse the youth, et cetera? So that was the whole idea.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
That would apply to anybody who's, who's vending CBD.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And that's why I put it at the end.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just think it's confusing for the, 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 the last sentence says professional and medical nature. Just, if we just said professional, then it seems like it applies to everybody, including medical.
Okay, so we can take that and that. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
So if some of them move to add the CBD language, the requirement for a certificate of analysis, as well as the signage language that we just discussed, then we'll continue the public hearing on the ordinance as amended to December 9th, which is in the planning board time after we deal with the doctors.
Including the dosage information.
Correct.
And at that time, we could just vote on it?
Yes, that'll be it. That'll be it.
So December 9th will be the final public hearing, and hopefully you'll vote on, yes, and we can vote on it, and that'll be the end. Okay. Be good with that?
Good with it.
If we're voting on the 9th, I'm good.
Okay. So.
Do we have to make a motion?
Uh, we need a motion. Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We just, it all in favor on that?
We can roll call, I think, fair enough.
Yeah, we can roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
No.
Okay. We now have a public hearing on ordinance 2019-1821 establishing a four-way stop intersection at Bernard's Ave and Garibaldi Street intersection and supplementing and amending Chapter 7 of the Borough Code entitled Traffic. Would.
Before you open it to the public, someone moved to amend to remove the reference to speed. It could still be adopted tonight.
I'll move that we remove the reference to speed. That's.
Yeah, that was, thank you, Christine. That was a good catch on that one.
And I could be a voice, so then you can open it.
Okay. So did we have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So I will open the public hearing on this ordinance for the four-way stop at Garibaldi and Bernard's Ave. Anyone like to be heard on this?
Hi there. Carrie Hazleton, 397 Mine Brook Road. I just want to thank the council, the fire, the police department, and the people that worked on the Streetwise project for getting this going, spending time over on Bernard's Avenue, watching people darting in and out of traffic, hearing from neighbors about the speeding of trucks, particularly before dawn, going down to the old industrial area. I just think that having this, this four-way stop, the trucks and, and the cars are going to have to plan to come to that stop, which is going to slow people down, and they'll be more likely to be following the 25 mile an hour speed limit that's enforced there. There's no visibility, and I just think it's a great first step to increase public safety and walkability down in Bernard's Ave. So thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Okay. Now we have a public hearing on ordinance 2019-1822 concerning.
Now we have to. We have to vote on the.
I like you.
Okay. Cookie fields. All right. So we close the public hearing on Garibaldi. So you want to move that one, Chris?
I move to pass ordinance 2019-1821 on final reading and adopt as published.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can open the public hearing on ordinance 2019-1822 concerning Borough Shade Tree Ordinance and supplementing and amending Chapter 13 of the Borough Code entitled Tree Protection.
I'm sorry to see we couldn't manage to.
Is that, is that, is that changes?
The one on the latest table I was working on, the table I was working on had blanks for the first three categories, so.
So this replaces that?
So we've got to substitute that new table.
The table under, the title Tree Removal has the correct information in terms of the number of trees to replace the trees of a certain caliber.
So do we have to have a resolution to accept this new?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a, a motion to replace this?
I move we accept the, uh, the updated tree removal table.
A second.
Now you can have a vote here.
I can be a voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that will go into the.
Can I just clarify, this, this came right from the Shade Tree Committee. They had extensive discussion about this table and this is the, this is the accurate and updated table that they're recommending.
I worked with the chair of the committee today and she contacted our forester and that's the correct table.
Okay. Yeah, it just changed on the 12 and the, oh yeah, the measurements changed too.
All of these were struck.
Yeah.
So they're.
Got it. Okay, so, anyone like to be heard on this ordinance? No, okay, so I will close the public hearing. Um, Jeff, you wanna do this?
Sure, I move we pass it.
What? What?
Yes, you may.
I move the pass ordinance 2019-1822 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Merritt?
Yes.
All right. Um, we'll now move ordinance 2019-1823, Creating an Information Technology slash Communications Committee and supplementing and amending Chapter 2 of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. At a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, November 12th. And, um, this was a result of Jeff's recommendation that, after speaking with our IT person. Um, so I think it's a great idea and we will put that in, hopefully, if everybody.
Mr. O'Day pointed out that on several of these advisory committees, we changed the membership to arrange.
Yes.
So if you wanna do that to this one, you can do that.
Yeah, I think you had seven and, uh, we can do seven to ten.
Could you, that would go down to the.
Right now, currently says seven, we, we may have a hard time finding seven in the people. You may wanna say up to seven or something of that nature.
Yeah, up to you all.
Well, seven to ten is fine, I think, because that way.
Well, what if you can't get some five to seven or something?
Yeah, you can have it without seven, but.
Right, it just won't have all membership.
Right.
So seven to 10 is what people wanna do?
Or you can get five to 10, you think you're gonna have a harder time getting?
Yeah, you should do five to 10 because then you're gonna have to make sure there's a quorum.
Yeah, right.
Right.
All right, five to 10?
Okay. All right, we'll do that.
It's just introductions, so you can introduce.
Right. So we're just introducing it, so you can just do a voice vote on this?
Yes.
Um, do we have a motion?
Motion.
So it's moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, there's another introduction of ordinance 2019-1824, Prohibiting Vaping in Public Places and Supplementing and Amending Chapter 3 of the Borough Code entitled Police Regulations. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM, Tuesday, November 12th, 2019.
How, uh, how and why would we be prohibiting this? It's like saying you can't smoke in public places.
You can't.
Well, you can't smoke cigarettes in public, right?
You can't, walking down a sidewalk in the middle of the street?
Um, yes, you can walk down the street, you can't in a, in a park.
Yeah, this is a public place, it's, uh, this was a, this was to fill a gap on the other two vaping-related ordinances that we actually passed. So this would prohibit using it in a public park or a, a public building. Uh, I mean, outdoor space, a venue, for example.
It's basically prohibiting vaping where, where smoking is prohibited.
Right, correct.
It's effectively what.
Smoking's currently prohibited in municipal buildings, parks, playgrounds, recreation areas, and public vehicles.
So this would, this would prohibit vaping in those same places?
It would mirror that.
But vaping is water vapor. It's, is there any second hand?
Actually, the language of the, the other ordinances dealt with e-cigarettes, so it would be, it's, and it's defined in there, what that is.
But they're not, I think, the reason that smoking's prohibited is secondhand smoke and litter, which you don't get with vaping, do you?
Oh, you get litter, you can find cartridges, uh, on the ground.
But there's no secondhand smoke.
I don't know, I don't wanna comment on.
And this also says, um, recreation areas and vehicles, like, what do you, what, what do you mean by vehicles? It doesn't define municipal.
Municipal vehicles. Municipal qualifies all of the nouns.
Municipal is the adjective for all of them?
Yes.
For everything?
Building, parks, playgrounds, recreation areas, and vehicles, so it's municipal vehicles.
The chief's not here, but does anyone know what the, um, citation would be if you were smoking or vaping in one of these places?
Same as for smoking, you get issued a summons and it could be $10. Be a municipal cartridge.
Okay.
And how many officers are we gonna have to hire to police all this?
I can't answer that.
So, can I move it?
Um, yeah.
I move that ordinance 2019-1824 prohibiting vaping in public places and supplementing and amending Chapter 3 of the Borough Code entitled Police Regulations be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Thursday, November 12th. Tuesday, November 12th, 2019.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will have a public hearing on that, on the 12th. Um, we have Resolutions 19204 to 19214. Anyone have questions or wanna remove any of these from the consent agenda?
I thought we had a point, I meant to ask, I thought we had appointed the municipal prosecutor to pass me.
Well, yes, but he resigned already.
Exactly.
So we've got another one now.
This is more, more of a, uh, he's my neighbor, so we, you and I were talking while we're getting our, what do you call it, on Mondays, our recycling out, and we were just chatting and he said that it was almost more than a full-time job and he already is a full-time lawyer.
Did you like them, uh?
Yeah, well, he and I spoke about it and, yeah, you know, so, uh, he apologizes that it's just, it was way more than he expected. It was kind of undersold to him that way.
It, it wasn't undersold for him. It was not undersold to him that way.
I'm just mirroring what I was told, I wasn't there, I don't know. So, um, however, that's, he apologizes for that.
Okay.
So, you were on the committee then, that vetted these, the second round then as well?
Yes.
Good.
Um, John, just a question, the, uh, or maybe it's Doug, the snow plowing, is this the same vendor or different vendor?
Same vendor.
Same vendor, okay. And it was only $140 more than the last contract? Um, anybody else have questions?
Where's this group home?
Um. Claremont, right? The group home?
The 83,00333 towards the acquisition and conversion of a property. Is that just a theoretical or is it a real place?
Where's the, my question is, where's this group home?
Well, you say when I read it, is it part of the major, so then I'll locate.
Yeah, that's a nice one.
So there, there is no.
So it's, it's a, I mean, a hypothetical one. It's that we need to do it and then we have to find one, is that kind of?
Well, apparently it has one that's applied. So our fair share plan has three group homes in it.
Uh huh.
And our expanding plan allocates $250,000 to be split among those three.
Okay.
So this is the first of them, which leaves two more. Now, there's a fourth one, because I gotta inquiry, um, the county property. Theirs was part of their approval, uh, with.
For the affordable housing, right.
So they're not getting any of the affordable housing trust fund money. In fact, their obligation on the ordinance was five before a unit, which the board of adjustment allows them to do off-site. The group home of the building has four units, so they had to give us $147,000, I think, for the fifth unit. So, so they're not part of the subcity at all.
Okay. All right. Got that. Okay, anything else on here? How often do we have to do the monitoring report?
How long?
For affordable, how often?
Year.
Yearly?
Yes.
All right, so would someone like to move Resolutions 19204 to 19214?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, um, we move on to reports. Public Safety, you met with me?
Uh, we have not, um, no committee recently.
Okay, Finance, I know you have a report.
Yes, well, you were there.
I was there.
So, uh, we kicked off our budget planning for, uh, 20, uh, 2020, uh, budget year. We, uh, spent the, the time reviewing our current budget and, uh, reviewing what, uh, early projections are. There's no real update at this point, it's really, it was a level setting. Uh, it was our kickoff meeting and, uh, we'll be continuing to update the council members as we, uh, make progress for the budget. The budget process normally takes several months, so we probably will have periodic updates, but nothing, uh, substantial from the setting of the baseline information at this time. Was there anything else that came out of the meeting?
Something we're supposed to ask or tell them. I know. I don't have my notes, I can have it, I can. Wasn't there, well, something we were gonna share with the council? I have some, yeah.
Yeah. If I come up with something, I'll, we'll add it.
Okay, yeah, I heard there was something we were gonna bring up, but.
Personnel? Christine, did you meet?
Yes, we met, we talked about stuff that we have to talk about in the closed session today.
Okay, so we'll hear about it later.
Yes.
Public Works?
We had a meeting last Tuesday, um, John, you wanna go through your, it's not many things that are new, but just picking up a lot of things left on.
Sure, um, we had, we had anticipated having soil placed on woodland today. Uh, yesterday's rain made it difficult for the topsoil supplier to get that material to us, so Madalum took advantage of it and put down filter fabric on both woodland and steeds. We do anticipate topsoil, we put in a long day tomorrow and try to get all the topsoil done with seeding to happen on Wednesday, uh, before forecasted rain for Thursday. Still waiting word from Tilcon for the exact dates for the million paving, which is tentatively scheduled for the week of, uh, November 4th, next week. We had a meeting with, uh, JCP and L and NGC regarding the utility pole placement on Claremont. And I believe Doug has some more information on that.
Yeah, um, we were trying to work with, uh, with everyone who did that pole relocated. We were unsuccessful, we had a Plan B before we had the JCP and L. NGC suggested creating an arc, a hundred-foot arc to the sidewalk, so that the sidewalk come right through the pole, go around the pole and continue, it's gonna be, uh, like I said, around a hundred feet is gonna be an arc. So we'll be easily able to get past the pole and have those restrictions and I think it'll be more likely. We'll be watching and looking at it. Almost give a delusion that it's set in between the, the current and the sidewalk. As the current pole is, um, the pole could not be placed where we wanted it just because of the, um, the gas man is there and we can put it inside the pole because they have to hang there. Uh, the, 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 uh, so we did a meeting with them today, but we already had a Plan B in place to discuss with the Public Works Committee. We thought it was an idea, so we might, we might, we may go ahead and meet down. We're also reaching out to the county, uh, NGC has sent the plan to the county this week, I'm saying, and I think we should be here to dial and that should be.
And they're doing, and it's, um, NCG will be doing it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
And we also expressed the JCP and L, our disappointment about them not being very good at communicating with us. And we may have some, uh, future action that we bring to the council to possibly, uh, address that. We received the permit from NJDOT for the drainage down at Lindabury, Route 202. You'll recall, we had to alter our plans to go to the north side of the roadway so we didn't, uh, cut the newly paved, uh, Route 202 in, in that area. Uh, we've been making some landscaping improvements at our, our pumping stations, uh, sewer, our sanitary sewer pumping stations. Um, two weeks ago, we replaced some overgrown, um, hemlocks at Fox Hollow. Replaced with arborvitae, uh, the residents very happy that that happened. Last week, we did some, uh, replacing of old overgrown by burnham at the Maple Village Pumping Station. Replaced the fence that's probably been there fifty years, uh, much to the happiness of the, of the residents there. And this week, we'll be doing the landscaping around the wet well and dry valve pit enclosure at the Bill Hill Pumping Station. We received an email from a resident concerning leaves, uh, particularly on some of our narrow roads with, uh, that are heavily vegetated, old fort road, scenic drive. The chief received this also. I believe Jack found a sample ordinance that Colts Neck had. The, the chief and I will be working together, uh, Public Works, Public Safety, to come up with something that gives us a little more teeth when we find people. As you know, we've got landscapers that just blow our, blow the leaves out into the middle of the road, bring them partway back, but still leave a precarious situation on some of our roads. So the chief has asked me to kind of partner with them and see if we can come up with something that'll give them, uh, a little, a better enforcement mechanism. Ultimately, it will fall on the residents that hired landscapers. We've got an education, um, situation we need, we need to address on some of our roads. This is a longstanding problem, it's, it's not new. At Public Works, we also discussed, uh, a proposed new road moratorium policy. Like the state, like the county, we have a 55-year moratorium after we pave a roadway. Only hardship cases, uh, would warrant a, a road opening or a true emergency gas leak, water main leak, et cetera. But we have those roads that say five to 10 years. And what brought it up is, uh, you know, the gas companies out here opening up Route 202. It wasn't paved that long ago. The contractor will do a temporary road repair on it, which will probably go one foot either side of the trench. You have a three, three-foot repair, it's a repair on what was otherwise a really good road. I've worked with the water company on Alcott Avenue, they were gonna do the same thing, I told them no. Uh, the road was paved, I mean, maybe eight years ago, you need to at least mow and pave a lane. We like to look to formalize something like that, that if you're in that five to 10, five to 10-year window, the road's still good. You put that patch in there, I don't care how good a patch is, it's a point of future failure. So we like to formalize a policy to make them do, uh, uh, to mow and pave, uh, at least the lane. And then af- after that, we could do, I mean, a year or ten years, do a, a normal trench repair. And I think that's in the packet, uh, with the report.
Talking, talking about JCP now, I don't know if anyone else here remembers, but we used to have a guy from JCP, uh, every third meeting or so, I think his name was Rob Walton. That would come and give us periodic updates of things, we don't see him or any representative from them anymore. Is that something by direction or they just decided to stop coming?
There's a new community relations person, I don't.
It's Carol Bianchi.
Yes, Carol Bianchi.
Who's the?
Rob, Rob Walton was promoting Carol Bianchi, she's replaced.
Yeah.
Carol Bianchi from Barnes Township?
Yes.
She actually is Barnes Township Mayor right now, which is just started this job with JCP.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh.
So she's our new, uh.
I know Carol very well, actually, I didn't know that, okay.
She's our new rep. And actually, she's been, I mean, I've had to call her on a few issues and she's been very responsive. She's still, you know, learning the ropes, but she's been very good about notifying everybody.
I have one question, the two oh two, where the PSENG is who was doing the night work?
Yes, they still are.
Right, and do we have any say in that since it's a state road and they're, no? Because a lot of cyclists have complained about it.
Because it's a state road, we don't have anything to say about it.
So even if we put a moratorium, it still doesn't apply to two oh two?
No. Yeah.
It's only on the roads that we're responsible for.
And it would probably, it wouldn't, well, unless the county has the same, does Somerset County have a moratorium?
Yes.
So that would cover Claremont and, and Mary?
We discussed at Public Works too, in the case of water, gas, uh, you know, the Board of Public Utilities is, is very strong. They may be able to supersede us if there is a, a, a public health need.
Right.
But it doesn't hurt to have, uh, something to try to keep our roads from getting torn up by utility companies.
But would this really, I mean, maybe other ta- other towns would make it work, I mean, we have a moratorium policy that we can enforce because they can do whatever they want.
On the state road, we're talking about the state road is where they can do what they want.
Right, but we don't really need it for our roads because we're not gonna, we, we know what we're gonna do and not do, and we, we have a laundry list of, of roads that have to be fixed, so. We're not gonna recycle back to another road for probably ten years that we've already done, no?
Correct. I'm, I'm not sure that I understand the.
I guess I'm trying to understand what the moratorium is gonna do, what, what, what will this achieve?
Keep them from opening a road.
We spent all this time and money in, in, in putting together a very expensive road and then a year later someone says, oh, I wanna get, uh, like, the natural gas that I decided all these years I don't want, now I want it.
We, we have a five-year moratorium, we could enforce that, we could tell someone, no, you cannot come and open the road. My concern was the next, you know, the next five to ten years, the road's still in pretty good shape. After five years, you're not seeing a whole lot of degradation in the pavement. You put a, a trench through there, um, now, now you, now you, you.
So you're talking about extending an existing moratorium?
Right.
About covering a period of time, it's not covered by the current moratorium?
That's what I'm hoping, yeah. Okay.
And then the water companies were set, they also, they opened, uh, Hillside and Mountain over in, uh, Twin Lakes. I told them you have to do, you know, the roads won't, was only paved, uh, four or five years ago, you have to mill and pave the whole road, sure, no problem.
Okay, that's like Alcott, looks good.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we circle back to this?
Yes, um, back to Finance that we didn't.
So there, there was an item on the Finance Committee agenda, we spoke about it length, um, and I think, uh, Jeff, I, I'd love to you for your input on this one as well. The veterans banners, which I think you were coordinating with a couple of different groups to deploy for the.
Sure, what's the, what's the question?
So there was a, um, part of the ordinance that we passed, I think we said that there was a fee to cover the cost of the, the banner itself. What the Finance Committee considered doing was making a one-time payment for the, for the, into the fund to do this of twenty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, allow the amount to be optional instead of required, so that if people can't afford it, the fund would, um, be seated with the money that we've put in, plus the money that we've collected. This would mean that retroactively, somebody who's contributed to the fund would get a letter from us saying, your fifty dollars is appreciated, however, uh, the council has determined to make that optional. If you'd like your, your money refunded, you can get your fifty dollars back, if not, you, you know, thank you for your contribution to this voluntary fund, which will be sustaining this program going forward. And then as new people, uh, ask to be involved, they'd be asked if they wanna make a donation to the fund as well, but they would not be required to make a, a donation to the fund.
I think what, what brought this up was we were looking at, you know, one, there was a person who, who actually sponsored themselves and we felt like, you know, that, you shouldn't do, have to do that. You know, not everybody, there's people who maybe nobody thought of and, you know, they'd like to be honored, so.
Well, we, we, we actually talked, talked about that among our group, um, the, the issue there was, in fact, I, I sponsored somebody that was, couldn't afford it and they didn't have a family member, so I, I paid for their banner. And the idea was that we would allow that, we would have that type of charitable fund. We, we've been pushing the timeline on this so hard in order to get it done in November, uh, for, for, uh, Veterans Day, that we really didn't have a chance to publicize that ability to contribute into the fund. One of the issues about having the borough sponsor it is then, we would have to be equitable, we'd have to be able to fund every and all veterans and we'd have, we have far more than we would have space for.
I think what our proposal was to make a one-time payment into the fund and then the fund would have the monies that people have donated, that choose to allow the donation to maintain it, to, you know, to stay. You know, anybody who doesn't ask for a refund would be in the, in the fund and this one-time payment that we make into the fund. And then if we get to a point where the fund isn't solvent in the future, we would either go out to, uh, to, uh, people and ask for donations.
But, well, the issue though, the.
Or, or we would.
Twenty-five hundred dollars would fund fifty banners and we have a lot more than fifty veterans, what happens to the fifty first?
The whole premise of this was that it wasn't gonna cost the borough any money to begin with, that people were gonna sponsor that.
And it, it, we could do it that way, this was just, uh, was reviewed at the Finance Committee that we were asked if, what we thought of the idea, we said we were bringing to the full council and get their opinion on whether or not we wanted to make this sort of one-time payment into the fund. We, you know, we were projecting what we were gonna need, looks like we, the fund would be solvent if, if the majority of people has had, you know, so far, people, everybody's participated because of requirement. But if we assume that, you know, even at eighty percent participation, uh, you know, the fund would probably be solvent for years to come.
I think we should leave it the way it is.
Okay, so anyway, the, the, the discussion is for the full council, whether or not they wanna go with this idea or whether they wanna leave it the way it is.
Comments, John, you were there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I like the idea, I, I think you said the other towns did it the way where they, they would sort of start seed the fund and hopefully it carries forward. I'd like to see if it, it can be self-sustaining donations, you know, if it needs a seed start, I, I could get behind that too.
But doesn't need a seed start, I mean, is there a list of veterans that don't have, I mean, I'd sponsor a veteran, I mean, I think you just have to tell people, ask people if they wanna sponsor somebody, that's all. I'm sure you'll have people come forward to do that.
What was the price of the banners, they were fairly inexpensive for?
Fifty dollars?
I think the donation was set at fifty dollars. And that was for a double sided, if a lot of remember? I think so, yeah.
Right, so they, they.
So it's twenty-five dollars per veteran essentially is what I'm hearing.
No, it's fifty, it's, it's actually a banner, the banner costs something like seventy-five.
It's the same picture on both sides?
No.
No, no, it's one side, but then there's two on a.
So it's twenty-five dollars per veteran?
Fifty dollars per veteran, because the banner is actually more than fifty dollars. And then we also built in the cost of the bracket.
Yeah, we had a five brackets.
Oh, so how much, how much is it then? I, I remember hearing forty-five. Basically fifty dollars per side to be.
Right.
All right, so, all right, let's forget size, a banner is, is a hundred dollars? Approximately with the cost of like the, the bracket. Okay, a hundred dollars. And how much, how many, how much room do we have?
We have forty-four spots.
Okay.
We're, we have, we have twenty-two poles, so we have forty-four banners, unless, we get to a point where some of them we may be able to stack.
And how many?
We haven't got that far down.
All right, so, so, so essentially twenty-two hundred dollars.
We have twenty now?
Is what we're saying, it would cost to, to populate all those spots, right?
We have twenty-two now, yes.
Okay, and how many veterans have shown interest in it, how many do we have?
Well, don't forget, this is, we don't know what the, what the interest is gonna be because we accelerated this so fast and I did make a presentation for the VFW, but. My guess is that once the banners are up, there are gonna be a lot more people who are gonna want it, or we do it again in May.
And we talked about if we get more than forty-four rotating.
That's right.
So for right now, how many people do we have? Twenty-two. Twenty-two, or twenty, how many are not paid for? They're all paid for.
They're all paid for.
Okay, so then why is there an issue?
It was just a, it was just a concept that was put forward, I think the other advantage, if there, if you wanna talk about potential positives of doing different things. The idea was that if you have this general fund and people were making donation into a fund, they're not buying their own banner, then it's not about, well, where's, where's my banner, why isn't my banner up? I paid for it, I want my banner up, it was, you're paying into the fund, the fund rotates the banners through, there would be a, you know, randomized selection process, which would be fair to everybody. And, you know, so you, when you make your donation, you're not buying your own banner, you're paying into the fund, it's supporting everybody's banners.
Then maybe the, the people who donate should donate to the fund instead of donate to a person. Instead of sponsoring a person. Instead of sponsoring a person, you buy, like, you're, you're buying donation, you're donating to the fund.
Well, technically, they are, there actually is a trust and they're donating to the Borough of Burnsville, but not as designated for that sponsorship, but technically, they're donating it to the fund. Actually, I think, you know, that is, uh, I think Tom brings up a valid point, I think the other point that was raised too, and I'll, I'll, I'll relay this, uh, because Sheriff Farackey's brought this up. We do say on the banners, you know, Burnsville honors, honors our veterans, well, we're not actually paying for it, the, the veterans are, so.
Right.
Should, should the borough do it, and that's where I, I brought the issue that, that if we do it for one, we have to do it for all.
I don't think the borough should do it, but I think people could, you could solicit donations from the community and then it's a community effort, it's not borough effort.
That was ultimately where we wanna go, we just didn't have a chance to publicize it.
And when you say Burnsville, you're not saying Burnsville, the council, you're saying Burnsville, the, the community who donated money into the fund. Well, how about if we don't have us put seed money, because right now, there's, those twenty-two people have paid, odds are, most of them are not gonna ask for their money back. You know, I think that would be, most of them would say, no, it's fine, keep it in the fund, so we still, so we actually have the seed money ordinance in there. But from this point forward, it'll be an optional. And I guess. I mean, you can nominate.
I don't know if I'd assume that, but, but, but the borough did put money in, I mean, the borough has put the money in the brackets, we put in about three grants for the brackets.
But we wouldn't have to put seed money in, because I'm, I would assume most of these people are not gonna ask for their money back, so. Well, you did put seed money in because you bought the pla- the brackets. Right, but they're, that's a one-time.
If the, they've, they've been funded to date, perhaps we could go as, you know, publicize it as you can donate to a fund, if somebody just wants to honor Burnsville veterans, something.
Right.
You know, you know, go between the person and see if, if that gains in traction, we can fund it, you know, on donation basis, you know, for the first year. Maybe revisit the idea next year for those hardship cases that are falling short somehow.
I think once they're seen, people are gonna say, this looks a great idea, how do I get involved in this, how do I get my grandfather up there, or whatever the case is, so.
I'm saying, well, the donation of fifty dollars.
It's not everyone can do that.
Right.
And so, as an effort to show how much we truly honor our veterans, we'll put the twenty-five hundred in. And the reason we're bringing it up is because budget talks start now.
Right.
For next year, and do we wanna have a situation next year where we're turning away even one veteran? I don't think so, and that's.
You really don't think if you put it after the community, you'd have people donating for community? I mean, I think in an afternoon, I can make any phone calls that I can fund everybody, so I don't.
So, I, we've had this discussion, do we wanna see what we can get from the community participation and bring this up to, on our next agenda? Well, I'm sorry, I, I have one more logistical question, we have forty-four veterans that take place for the twenty-two poles right now. Next year, would we take those down and they gotta get put in storage and we put another forty-four up?
Potentially.
I understand there was a rotation plan as part of the ordinance, wasn't it?
The plan, the, the thought was is that, that you're not, if we get more than forty-four, which we presumably will, then, uh, there'll be a, sort of a random rotation.
Okay.
And so there'd be no guarantee that you were up every time, but if you were up, say, in the May-July segment, uh, uh, if you were not up in the May-July segment, you would then get preference to be up in November, for example.
All right, so we're doing Memorial Day and we're doing Veterans Day, is that right?
Well, actually, the Memorial Day goes through fourth of July, and then you have the month of November.
Okay, I got it, okay, good.
So.
So how do people feel, I mean, for the council to decide what they wanna do?
Jeff, do you wanna go back to your committee and talk to them, I mean, because you kind of, they have talked about this whole issue.
Well, we're gonna wanna unveil this whole program pretty shortly because Veterans Day is coming around, so I think, uh, we probably, you know, best make our decision now, but for the council, by what you find. I, I can see merits to both sides, uh, to be honest. I think, uh, there's, there's a certain attractiveness to the, the borough doing it, uh, truly we, we honor it. I think there, that does create for some potential logistical problems that, you know, once you open up that Pandora's box, it's gonna be hard to undo what you done. And that's the negative part of it.
What's the worst-case scenario?
We, then, then, once we establish precedent that we've done it, then we're sort of committed because the borough sponsors it, we're committed then.
But I think we're not talking about.
For example, there's over a hundred members of the VFW, we've got, I don't know how many names are on, on that, uh, plaque out in the memorial park, we, we're essentially committed to doing everybody.
Well, I think what, what we're, where we're saying is that the, the borough wants to, if we, if we were to pass this, if the council decided they wanted to pass it, we would be saying that we want to contribute to it. The same way the public's being asked to contribute, we're not taking it over, we're not guaranteeing funding into perpetuity, we're making a payment into the fund, we are participating in it, we're not, we're not bearing the entire cost. Nor are we bearing the future cost, we're just participating in it to. I think the future cost is the most important thing out of the sentence you just made. Yeah, okay, well, I mean, that's for us to decide, I mean, we can, we can do anything we wanna do with it, including nothing at all.
Well, we could put money aside and say, the, the, uh, the borough is gonna sponsor hardship cases or essentially orphan cases, somebody that doesn't have family, we, we could do that certainly.
I can, did, do I get enough in public remations that can be, you know?
Can cover those, yeah.
Hardship cases.
I think that the, the, the genesis of the discussion was, right now, in the town of Burnsville, if you wanna be, participate in being honored, you have to pay or get somebody to sponsor you on your behalf.
Let me ask.
Other, other towns, the example was given to us, and that's just what the information we were given, other towns don't require that, other towns say, if you're a veteran, you meet these criteria, your picture can be placed. We would ask you to participate by giving us a donation, but you just have to meet the other criteria to participate.
Okay, I, I like the way you framed that, I actually, I like the way, if you could write that down, Anthony? Can you write down what he said verbatim?
Just play the tape back.
I, I, I will play it back, yeah.
Yeah, no, I like the way that you worded that, I think that's probably more appropriate, because it just, it just bothered us when we were looking at the list that somebody had to sponsor themselves, you know, it just, it just didn't feel right.
Hey Ralph, if, if, if one were, if one were to write a check for a donation, could that be put into some kind of veteran escrow account for lack of better say?
We have one set up.
We have, we, we actually passed that by resolution in some meetings ago, there is a trust that was set up by our treasurer to do that.
There is?
Yeah.
So, so if that were funded by, say, me, just deduct from it when someone says, I, I'd love to be on that, but I don't have the money, is that how that would work?
That's the criteria that the council establishes, then yes.
If there's a shortfall in that, I'll make up the difference personally, because that, it's just a, a very close thing to me, okay?
So if there's a hardship case where somebody is gonna sponsor themselves, we can cover that?
I'll, I'll, I'll do that, I'll do, I'll do that personally after twenty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very generous.
That's good, I think the, the question is whether or not the council feels that the municipal town should do it. I don't have a feeling on that, I, I don't wanna, I think that gets sticky, I wanna do it personally.
Well, I think there's a certain, uh, uh, to argue the point that, I think there's a certain attractiveness, if we're gonna say Burnsville's honoring, then, then Burnsville.
Oh, let me say, I don't need my name, that's not what I'm trying to get at at all, I'm trying to say that it could stay Burnsville, I was just saying where the money comes from.
I think with Chris's start, maybe it'll, you know, just, you know, say, you know, if you live in a, if one individual donated twenty-five hundred dollars and, you know, I'll, I'll contribute a hundred bucks.
And then ask people if, if they wanna be in it, they wanna have a banner, they can make a donation, but they're not required to.
You just have to bring one of those big checks like that.
Yeah, there you go, um, but it's, it's a, it's a voluntary donation and then no one has to pay fifty dollars to get their banner up there. Because there will be money in the fund for those people who don't or can't make a donation. Yes, are we good with that, does that sound good?
I'm, I'm very appreciative of the extremely generous offer that council mentioned it made, but I do think that if the, if we're, if we're, if we're gonna put up a, if we're gonna put up a banner that says Burnsville honors, I think we should participate in some fashion.
Well, we did, we have three thousand dollars already.
I need to clarify how much we actually did put in, three thousand for the brackets, that doesn't sound right to me.
It was something like that.
Was it?
Yeah, I believe it was a little less than that.
Okay, well, that can be our contribution then.
Right, it's almost twenty-five hundred.
There's also the, the hours, so the, the, so the road team is gonna be.
Is it the road department that's in there?
Yeah, they're putting them up, so, good.
Okay.
I think we're good, yes? Yeah, good, okay. Um, other, let's see, so we were up to housing and zoning, anybody have any questions for Mr. Price on his reports? Or do you have anything to add?
Uh, only that I provided you with two new pages of, um, reports this, this month, one was a third quarter report. And on the other was an update on the status of the multifamily housing and how we're doing with letters going out and compliance and court adjustment. Earnings and how many have been approved, so that was just useful information for you, um, if you want to talk about that offline or ask me more questions, that's fine. Uh, the other thing is that, um, the resolution nineteen two oh one, which was the lean resolution, uh, we've got one and a half a now. And there is a, an estimate for that work to be done that needs to be signed by the, the council. And, uh, I was a little late getting it to Anthony, I only received the quote on Friday. But, um, if that could be signed, are you tonight, uh, we can get this work going later, to that, later this week.
What do we need to do?
Yeah, I think you can do that much.
How much is it? And what's the estimate?
Uh, the estimate for this work is, the cleanup work is thirty-nine hundred dollars. And, um, finish up any additional leaves, another thousand dollars. This is a big tractor project.
Is that, uh, one point one? So that's, um, and then that, then will be a lean against their.
Correct.
Does that include the tree?
Yes.
Oh, you know this part.
Yeah, cut up the tree in front lawn, cut up the trunk into logs to stack, chip the branches, prune. Uh, it's pretty detailed, I met with the contractor last week of that. Uh, it's pretty detailed, I met with the contractor last week of that, so he knows the scope for this year. And that is, that, that's the quote that I have here, and I can leave this with.
Does the bank know that that's the quote? Do they know, cause that's the bank-owned property, right?
Yes.
Do they know that that's the quote?
Who?
The bank.
Not yet.
But you will notify them first, yes.
Well, Leslie will notify them through the, the lien process.
Right, okay.
I, I have one comment, uh, Jeff, is that for ongoing maintenance, or is that just for the initial cleanup?
No, this, this is just for the cleanup for two thousand and nineteen, I also have another quote from the same vendor, who would be prepared to go on a monthly cleanup, uh, starting in March.
Well, I think we should enter into a contract for a monthly cleanup, I think it should be on an as-needed basis, Jeff goes out and makes a determination if needed, but I don't think you have a monthly maintenance contract.
And also, that estimate's not to make the place, like, selling perfect and pretty, we just want it so it's not like an eyesore.
Oh, absolutely not, this is a thirteen-acre parcel, all we're trying to do is clean up what you can see from the street and around the house.
Have we done this in the past for any other property?
No, cause we just passed the ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
Passed the ordinance last month, so.
To give us the.
Cause I'm just wondering if we're gonna actually get the money from the bank, or if we really have to wait until the property sells, and then whoever purchased it from the bank ends up clearing all the liens, so it could be a matter of months or longer for us to get our money back, is that right?
Could be a long time, yes.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I don't know how Leslie's going to structure the next tax bill, I mean, there's one going out now, there'll be another one going out in the first quarter of next year, whether she will include this number on that tax bill, I'm not sure, the financial mechanics of that.
Is that property current on their taxes?
Yes.
So, the bank is paying the taxes?
Yeah.
They're just not maintaining the property.
So, we might be doing them a favor.
Maybe.
Maybe they'll just, maybe.
That just seems really high of them.
Yeah, I don't know, what do we wanna do?
What about, what if just, just removing the tree, doing nothing else, would that, is that part of the?
The tree, does the tree have to be removed, I mean, it's the split tree, right?
Yeah, the one in the front, yes, he can, he can cut it up and leave it there, or he can cut it up and chip it and take it away.
Is it really, it's, you know, do we, can we just cut the lawn? Can't we just, I mean, really, can't we just cut the lawn?
We, we should do the minimum necessary.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, I mean, the tree is like unsightly, but I, I don't know if we really have to, it's been there for like two years. What do you think?
I don't know, I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
Mow the lawn. And I mean, I don't even care about the leaf.
Put that whole ordinance in place, so, you're right, it may have been there for two years, but we didn't have any remedy for it, now we do.
Well, I know, but it wasn't, it's any, you know how many people in my, where I live have trees down? There's a zillion trees down, what are we gonna start?
Well, no, it's only when it's an eyesore and it's not being maintained.
But there's a lot of trees on a lot of properties that are falling down, that are just there, so I don't know whether it's necessary to deal with the tree, but it is necessary to mow the lawn.
That's right, I'll see the distinction, yeah.
Where is the tree?
It's, it's not.
In the middle of the lawn.
It's in the middle of the yard, it's on a, a eleven-acre property.
So, you can't mow the lawn if the tree's laying there?
Correct.
Well, you can mow around it, it's not, I don't care, whatever you want to do. It's mine, in my area, so.
Oh, it is.
This is, this is a long-time cleanup, this is a property that goes around on a long gradual curve, so it's got a lot of street frontage.
Right.
And that's what we're, we're trying to clean up, that's the main focus of this, this cleanup.
That was the purpose for why we enacted this ordinance.
Exactly.
You know, it's just.
Yeah.
Can we move a dead down for it?
So, it was what, thirty-nine hundred, and then another thousand for the leaves, or?
Yes, and, you know, once he's done the cleanup, there may be more leaves to come.
Right.
Uh, I can have him hold off on that, and we'll just do the thirty-nine hundred.
Yeah, why don't we do that first?
That's the middle-of-the-road argument.
Everybody's got leaves, right?
Remember, we're just trying to have it comply with the property maintenance code.
Right.
And that's, they were not getting ready to sell.
Yeah.
We don't have to make it pretty for them to sell it, we're not selling it.
No, I know, but I don't know what's.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make it look visually appropriate from the street.
Right, the, the idea being, it, it impacts the neighborhood.
Well, if that's the purpose of our ordinance, then I think we need to take some action.
We're not being arbitrary, I mean, we have a property maintenance code.
Is that in, is that in compliance with the property maintenance code, what, what the contractor wants to do?
Yes, it is, yes, we, we're not going over and above, there's a great deal more that needs to be done to that property.
Yes.
The initial cost is high, because it's been a clock.
For so long, right. Yeah.
It's like, maybe thirty-nine hundred dollars a month for the water.
Right.
Well, I would support this, I think we, I would wanna see what happens at the end of the quarter, if we recoup the money from the bank, um, with the next tax bill.
Experiment.
And we'll find out, you know?
I, I also suggested if we are to consider entering into a retainment agreement with the contractor.
For these projects, these kinds of things?
Maybe square footage, or, or whatever, uh, but, like I said, I don't wanna see us entering into a monthly maintenance contract, but.
No.
Jeff and Jeff can make the determination as to when, you know, contractors need.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, so do we, I need a motion for this thirty-nine hundred?
Ralph has to certify.
Oh.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't talk about this specific thing in the finance.
No, we did not, as you, you all know, we really are not funds budgeting for this type of event, but, but we can.
Can we look at this then for November twelfth, is that?
Yeah, we'll have to wait on it, um, cause Ralph has to certify the funds, and, and we're not sure how quickly we get them back.
We need to hold it, hold it up.
We don't have any, like, people that mow stuff, that can just mow it?
Mows.
Well, who, who mows the fields, I mean?
We have, we have a contractor that makes, that doesn't make this on our fields.
Okay.
If the council wants, if you want to do this tonight, then we, we can, with Doug's budget, which isn't, doesn't have this charge in there.
Right.
But through Doug's budget, we can, we can make this happen tonight, if, if you want, and, you know, with the weather getting later, maybe you wanna get this done.
Or maybe it'll snow, and we won't see it, and it won't matter anymore.
So, if we get, um, at some point, when we get the money back, you'd reimburse Doug's account, it's just, we don't know when that'll be.
No, we don't.
Whether it'll be within this budget or next year's budget.
Or the year after that, depends on ourselves.
Yeah.
Or if the bank pays it through their taxes.
So, at some point, Doug will think he got a windfall, cause they'll have forgotten it.
But did I, did I hear we're not sure if we would recoup it through the tax bill or not, it's more not, we don't know if we would? Did?
Well, the tax bills have all gone out.
No, I mean, um, would the mechanism for us to recoup the thirty-nine hundred dollars be through adding it to the next quarter's tax bill as due, and then they would have, in order to stay current on their taxes, they'd have to pay the thirty-nine hundred?
Yes.
We could do that.
Right, when does the next tax bill go out?
Three months. The bill is out, it's, it's the next quarter, starting November first.
So, it would be next year's budget if we got it back?
That's when we get the money.
When we get the money.
And it would certainly be something with finance community that we need to budget.
Yeah, for these kinds of things, yeah.
With this, with this type of situation.
I would say that if we're not gonna do it tonight, to wait is a little ridiculous, cause it could snow, and then this is not, this is a mute point.
So, my only other question to Jeff would be, is this the most important property to do, this is the first one we, cause this is gonna be sort of our test case, to see if we can recoup the money, and how long it takes to do that, is this the right test case, or is there a better test case?
This is the right test case.
Okay, so I would support this on the basis that we're gonna try and recoup the money, we wait to see what happens on this property, we have some idea what's gonna happen, and if we keep doing this in the future, uh, is it gonna take us three months, six months, twelve months, twenty-four months to recoup the monies, and have some, you know, additional discussion for the next case that comes in front of us?
And we won't know until we try.
Let's do it.
So, let's do it.
The thirty-nine hundred only, the one thousand was for the leaves, we're not doing that.
We'll leave that, we'll leave that for now, okay? So.
So, what do we need?
I need a motion for the thirty-nine hundred.
A second.
Uh, I assume we need a voice vote, cause it's money.
Yeah, voice vote, please.
A roll call. A, a roll call, I mean.
I mean, yeah, roll call.
That's right, Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
I support it, uh, based on the case that we're gonna recoup the money through the tax bill, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
This is the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Can I just mention something that came up in the Housing and Zoning Committee, that, uh, not, not what you're thinking, it'll be different, but it does pertain to the property maintenance ordinance we have, so, one of the things, we've been actually discussing this through several of the, uh, Housing and Zoning meetings, but we have a, an issue with our property maintenance ordinance, which makes a difference, it can't be enforced, right, so, the, the question is, is that it mentions junk, you know, you can't have junk, and, uh, and one of the cases that we've been summons for, the judge threw it out, because we didn't have a definition of junk.
One person's junk is another person's treasure.
Renee Fuzzos done a lot of work, looking at a lot of different ordinances of other municipalities, we have a definition of junk, I just wanna report that, we bring this forward at a, at a next, perhaps on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can amend our existing household, uh, household, uh, property maintenance, uh, reverting back to my, my real life, uh, property maintenance ordinance, so that we can, uh, have a definition of junk.
You know, we incorporate the state housing code by reference, so I think that's a term, the state housing code, so.
State housing.
We incorporate the state housing code by reference, um, so, I'm surprised the judge, uh, didn't force that.
Yeah.
Just, uh, just what her, her experience has been.
So, it looks like Sanford and Son, can't call that junk?
Yeah, right.
It's an heirloom.
Antiques.
I've had that defense raised.
Yeah, or, uh, any liaison reports, Christine, have you had any meetings?
Uh, I don't, I do wanna ask a question about one of the reports in our monthly reports, which is recreation.
Yeah, the change in the fee.
Not the fee, but the fishing derby?
Oh, yeah.
I just need some clarification, like, what is it about the plants that prevent the fishing?
It's too much growth.
There's too much, they, they can't get close enough to the water, and their lines will probably get tangled in the, in the plantings.
So, can we cut some of them, cause they're native, I mean, they're native plants, so they're supposed to be.
The reason I think Environmental Commission has them there is they create a barrier for the geese, the, the, geese tend not to land in water where they can't see what's lurking in the, in the foliage, like, it could be a fox in there, so they don't wanna take the chance. Um, yes, Carrie, do you wanna address that from?
Oh, yeah, um, I, I, was the fishing derby unable to take place this spring?
That's right, it was canceled.
Okay, when, when I worked with Doug, and, and with Christine, and with all the volunteers from the high school and scouts, um, to put the plantings in, we left spaces, a lot of spaces.
Yeah, but they get a hundred kids, there's no way a hundred kids could get close enough, I think that was Cheryl's point.
Okay, so, yeah, that's a big derby.
Yeah. You know, a couple of kids wanna go down and fish, they could, like, a hundred kids, you can't get down there.
So, what if you go?
So, what's the proposed solution?
There isn't one at the moment.
Well, to cancel it, I, I think, what if you did, like, age groups at certain times or something?
Yeah, I think, I think we gotta come up with a solution that's better than just canceling it, that looks at, like, waves of kids, so, you know, the certain age group goes between eight and nine, the next age group goes between nine and ten, you know?
You wanna take that back to recreation?
Yeah, yeah, we'll take it back, if you can help us cancel, this was too much of a logistical undertaking, like, with, with space.
Bring that suggestion.
There, there's been a lot of positive feedback from it when we've done it, so, you know, I think if we, if we could find a way forward, that would be great.
I think it's a tragedy in the council.
Was it an all-day thing, or was it?
It was a half-day.
No, it was like, uh, yeah.
I think it's pretty heavily fished, we stock fish.
They do stock it, yeah.
So, can it go in the morning, like, the morning group, and after?
But that's recreation, we're not solving that problem, we're sending it back to recreation, Peter?
Carrie, I would need, uh, was there any discussion at the meetings, I'm not sure anybody from RACAC to, to Bar Mel, who's already around, Bar Mel really wanted to make sure there were more spaces, and if there wasn't, it has to change, so, I would be happy to look at it. We have a lot of ground to play with, because we still have all the area that is invasive knotweed on the far side. If we, and we've got our drainage plan, if you wanna put in place, um, for quite a lot of the areas, we've got plants over the water coming off of two-oh-two, which I think we've got a grant for.
I, I was at the meeting today.
And the far side, so, that whole area hasn't been planted yet, I mean, it's gonna take us some time to figure out how we're gonna address the knotweed, but that's at least half.
Yeah, but it's very wet back there.
Yes, it's really wet, but we have, we have drainage grounds back there, too.
But what we'll do, we, this now is, if, the council is agreed that we wanna do whatever we can to have the fishing derby, so we will send it back to recreation to come up with a solution, and to work with the Environmental Commission to figure out where the best spots will be, so.
So, I know that last year and the year before, we were able to, uh, contact, to get the Great Swamp, and they have that fishing trailer that came with the pools and the bait and everything, the volunteers from the, um, from the Great Swamp, and so they may be able to provide some kind of guidance, because that's their whole thing, is to promote fishing. So, the Great Swamp should probably be involved in the solving it.
Okay, we'll send it back to recreation.
I need to know to myself.
Okay, they have a meeting, when do they meet, Wednesday?
Yeah, I think it's the first Tuesday, Wednesday, not a month.
So, we will send it back to them, cause that, they do that in the spring, right?
Fall.
Fall? Well, we missed the fall, so.
Late now, but it was in October last year.
Okay, so we'll have to work on it for, uh.
If you do it in the spring, too.
Yeah, we can do it in the spring. Yeah, um, any other meetings, Christine, did you go to any green, green team, uh, what else have you got?
The green team got a grant.
Yes.
Uh, Sustainable Jersey gave us bronze again.
Excellent.
And that's good news, thanks to Bob and Ed, and, um, for the New Jersey State League of Municipalities, we're gonna get an award.
Oh, great, okay, oh, that's right, Ed's coming down, are you coming down?
In Atlantic City.
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe, okay, good, uh, Diane?
Um, uh, the Board of Health didn't meet, and H-Pac met on the seventeenth, and I don't really have much to report, but the, the, um, barn is painted, uh, as Dr. Squibb. It looks really nice.
Yeah.
And they also decorated for, um, Halloween, in the fall festive season, and it is lit at night, when you drive by.
Yeah, they did, if you were at the trunk retreat, they did an amazing setup there, that was phenomenal, they had so much stuff. Um, they're a great group of volunteers. Tom, did you have any committees?
No, we didn't, any other committee meetings, other than.
Planning board.
Finance and public works, which we already talked about.
Right, um, any other liaison, yeah?
Yeah, as for Shetree Committee, in addition, we met on, uh, October sixteen, so in addition to the revised ordinance, uh, we have started to talk about twenty-twenty events, and, uh, how we can better leverage, uh, social media to get information out about the native plants, and planting, and some tree maintenance, and, and one of the things we thought, uh, we would also do was bring back the pruning workshop.
Okay, good, um, you said recreation meetings.
Right, we did, uh, fishing derby talked about, we talked about the banners that we were working on, also, uh, the idea was floated, I think, very, very, uh, early on, about eight-foot hoops at the basketball court with younger kids who can't plug it all ten feet, and also, the, with the minimum wage increase, there'll be some pressure on the budget as, we need more lifeguards, and they're getting more expensive every year, cause, you know, they're basically in the fifteen dollars an hour or something, that, have to circle back to finance, so, and I think, just to make sure we're staying ahead of that.
And it's not just the, uh, lifeguards that are going up, it's all of our hourly employees.
All of them, with, with the way the New Jersey lifeguarding statute changed, we need actually more of ours now.
Double hit, double hit, because we gotta pay more, and we're getting more people.
More by the more people, you know, so, but we'll circle back on that finance.
They also are working on, if anybody's a pickleball player, they're gonna mark out a pickleball court on the basketball court there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what is pickleball, is that the?
I don't know, but people keep asking for it.
Is that those old paddles?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's like paddleboard on a, on a, on a, on a half-sized paddleboard.
Yeah, it's very popular among my age groups.
Okay, I wasn't ninety percent sure of that.
Yeah, um, was that, anybody else have council liaison reports? No, okay, parking, twenty-twenty parking decals, I thought we already did this.
We, this was.
Okay, okay, we, we were just looking for the fees and the, uh, to revisit the, the fees, uh, for all the lots, and, uh, the, the merchant lot went down to ten dollars last year, so, it's up to council where you want it to.
So, one of the things that we specifically said when we agreed as a council to go down to the ten dollars fee from the, was it?
It was two hundred.
Two hundred dollars, was that we were gonna revisit it after six months, so I think we're at the six-month point, so we're revisiting that, and then I think there were some other changes that were also proposed at the same time.
There was just, um, really to solve the fees for the railroad station lot, and the parking kiosk was twenty-five cents an hour, and the merchant lot, so, uh, really, it's just the fees for two thousand twenty.
Okay, and how is the ten dollars working, if people actually bought those decals?
We haven't sold many since we've done that, only because we've done that, I, it wasn't right at the beginning of the year, so, we've. We haven't sold many since we've done that, only because we've done that, I, it wasn't right at the beginning of the year, so we've sold maybe about like, just a handful, maybe four, I think we did, since we, since we changed that, but.
So where are all the people working?
My, well, my, well, they were never really utilizing it, they were paying for the decal and then not really using it, still parking on the street or parking in the train station or someplace else. So one of the reasons we changed it was we thought we'd encourage more, more people to use it. Um, the other, the other reason we changed it was so that we could allow free four hour parking for just regular shoppers. And you know, my observation is that we have a handful or more people parking there, sometimes I see a dozen cars, we have forty six spaces, so minus whatever decals are parked there, you could park that many other cars for free, uh, for up to four hours, so you know, my observation is it, it's, it's better than it was, it's not, you know, a wholesale change.
So what do you think we should do? But there's more, um, I think people taking advantage of the free three hour.
Yeah, I think so, four hour parking.
Four hour, I think that's, that's the.
And I think, you know, it's actually the signs that went up probably about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, I, I think to help facilitate awareness, more so than, you know, what we had done prior to that.
They wanted to give it more time.
So I, I think we should give it more time, I, I also think that uh, there were some numbers about how many decals we would give out, and um, how many decals we would provide to people who weren't required to buy decals. I just think, I asked Anthony to give us uh, some statistics on how many people are buying decals, the concern I had was if we were charging two hundred for a decal, demand might be X. But if you charge only ten dollars for decals, suddenly demand could be three or four times X, and we don't wanna have, they're filled with decals and have no shopper parking, was all I was thinking. So would, do you have statistics for how many decals are sold?
We, yeah, we have um, six decals were sold for those who are not required to buy for planning board resolution.
Okay.
So the ones that aren't required, there are forty four of those, uh, who, who have, who have purchased it. It says fifty nine in the resolution, and that's because some of the requirements could change if there's like the usage of one of the buildings, it, you know, it's different, that could go like could shoot up from two decals required to eleven, so that, that, that fifty nine is kind of like the maximum, I would say, uh, you know, that, that's required by planning board resolution, and we've issued it to actual twenty applica, there were twenty applications that we've issued decals to, so there are twenty decals in use, even though some of those forty four were purchased, and you know, they don't have employees to use them, they just bought them, and that
Because they're required.
They're required to, they bought them, but they're not in use, but as far as applications, whether twenty, uh, six of them are not required.
So I would, I would propose just to simplify the, the ordinance, there's a resolution going forward, saying that sixty decals are available for people who are either required or would desire them. And then that way, we don't fill the lot up with decals and we still have spaces for everybody else. Right now, if you add the two numbers fifty nine and seventy one, I think you get to, that's a lot of.
Yeah, and it's like you said, it's forty six spaces, and yeah.
Then that would be what, hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty um, decals, so I think we should just maybe cut it in half, say it's sixty five total decals available.
Sixty five.
Whether you're in, whether you're in one category A or category B, and the rest is for shopper parking. And we'll try it out for another year, is that?
Yeah.
Sound like people, what people wanna do?
Yeah, and you know, I think it's, it's a positive step towards the merchants and business.
Yeah, we haven't lost any, and we've gotten two.
Got some new ones, so that's good. Um, best practices worksheet.
Sorry, do we need to vote on ten A, or is that?
If, if we wanna do the resolution tonight, we can, we can, we don't have, we can do the resolution in that, that next meeting.
Okay.
We don't start selling decals till like the second week of, of December.
So next week?
I just put it on just for, for.
Yeah, this was just to talk about.
I'll have a resolution for, for next meeting.
Um, this best practices inventory, you require to do this for state aid, is that what?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, I just had a question on some of them, I mean, great score. There was, I didn't get, personal use of municipal vehicles, do we have people that actually take their vehicles home? Cause you said, no, you don't do whatever you're supposed to do with, you know.
Well, I believe it was written, I think it was, the key word was a written policy, and at the moment, at the moment, it's not written, to my knowledge.
A written vehicle use policy, yes, okay, I just thought maybe it wasn't applicable.
No, no, it was just a written portion of it, and we will, we're addressing that.
I thought it was hysterical that we're supposed to have it drafted the budget the first week of January.
It's always hysterical, because we don't have any, any state numbers.
No, jeez.
Nothing, it's, I, I, I can't explain it. So, so, going through this, I was actually pretty impressed all the things we did have.
Yeah.
But there were a number of things for which.
No, it was a good score.
There are, there were a number of competencies or best practices for which there, there are no points, that, but you still, I guess, have to declare whether you do it or not. Is there anything, because there were a lot of pages to this, is there anything that we should be doing, do you think that we ought to prioritize on the next year that we're not doing? I would say just in, in total, there are a number of things that we do from year to year, that is not completely documented. That they, that, that we do these things, and that is
That there's not a formal.
There's not just a formal, um, document to, to, to say that, in case there's people that are in that particular position, or a supervisor that leaves, and then asks questions that don't have the institutional uh, memory that a lot of us have, so that is something that I feel we, we need to do better on, and, and we're in the process of doing that.
What does it mean when it says perspective?
I'm sorry?
The answer is prospective, instead of yes or no.
That means you're, you're going to do it.
Ah, okay.
Well, we're gonna do everything, so.
Yeah, eventually, right?
The other question, uh, cause one of the questions had to do with electronic vehicle, do we have any electric vehicles in our fleet?
No.
Well, we do not.
And we don't, we don't have any plugs, right, chargers?
We do not have any chargers, I mean.
Could do that one in the next couple of years.
And there was this cybersecurity training for employees, I think that was perspective, that we're gonna do this.
Yeah, we, I've been working with Chris and
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Chris holds, uh, uh, will hold some discussions with various departments at various times.
Yeah.
To, uh, our insurance, and Anthony will back me up on this, is, is very, very high on cyber protection, because there have been so many instances where the municipalities have been held hostage.
I know.
For tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Unbelievable.
They lock their computers up.
Yeah.
And, and they, and they have to pay, they, they, they actually get extorted and paid money, so.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's a great thing to have planned. Um, but yes, good, good work on a high score.
Thank you.
Um, deer management, potential new additions of borough property. I think Ed wants to tell us something.
So you heard Alan Shack tonight, and he, uh, you know, spoke out in support of deer management, and I think a lot of people were surprised when that four point four acre parcel was removed, so I, and Mike Anderson from the New Jersey Odeon, he's the sanctuary director there, and Flav Baker, head of the green team, were here, cause I think there's a concern that we're going backwards. But in, in actuality, I don't think we are, because Christine suggested uh, two other plots, but I think Mike and Barbara here, I hear them if you want to, I think we have time. But the two plots, um, two fifty one and two sixty one Clermont on the tax map, there's one other plot that uh, Berman doesn't own yet, but I don't know if you wanna consider that, so that you don't have, you don't have to bring it up again, that might be uh, also added to the deer management, unless I be having to come back to do that as well, so. Does anyone have any, I think I gave you three pages, I thought they, they were pretty clear, one was just a, the uh, pub notice and, and the list of properties and the people who hunt on them. And the other were the two, uh, with the tax map, basically, the map itself. The last page was just, I think, um, what was to show that the hunters are serious, I mean, we, they were told not to hunt on that property, so we gave a G and an NG as to where they should be, it was pretty obvious, and so I think, uh, and they've already taken down, uh, Kevin Valentine, the chief is in here, but uh, they've already taken down, I don't know if they finished taking down their feeders and their tree stands from that particular property, but, so they're very thorough. Uh, they were, we left up the signs, no hunting signs, cause that really pertains to borough property as well, no one should be hunting there anyway. Unless, unless, and, and that's what the deer management is all about, they got approval to hunt there. So I don't know the.
So Ed, can I just clarify, so on properties that are part of the deer management plan, it still has a no hunting sign on it, but, but are, are deer management people understand that they're allowed to hunt? It, that's, the general public's not allowed to hunt there.
Right.
Yeah, 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 right, that's why they get a permit, and yeah.
Yeah, the nice part of, I think, of adding those two Clermont things is there's, there's parking there, you know, the parkers, cause I've gotten a few complaints about, from Young's Road, that they don't like people parking on their you know, if they're going in that way.
Right, right.
But if they have
Into Peter's track?
Yeah, to get into Peter's track, so at least they could, you know, pull in and park and go in from that side.
Yes, and they have decals on their car, and they put the, a permit right on the dashboard, so.
Oh, they have, okay, cause I'll tell people that to make sure that they're the, you know, the authorized people, they have to have the permit in the dashboard?
Yes, and they have a decal on the car.
Okay.
I have no problem with the two sixty one Clermont, but I do have a question, I have a concern about two fifty one Clermont, as, because a good part of that is, um, the house that's there, that we have talked about making a nature center, et cetera, having other functions there. Uh, there's the carport, we've talked about having functions there, if you take that area out of it, then it, it very likely falls below the minimum required for, for hunting.
Well, why would you take that area out?
Cause you're not gonna be hunting in those areas, the people are gonna be there.
Well, when you have a, well, it's a five acre plot, and, and it's three acre now.
But the, the season is what, October?
When you have a three acre plot, you don't take out the house, it's, it's, it goes by acre.
Well, it can be subject to scheduling too, you know, maybe, but it's Peter's track, right, so it's.
It's attached to Peter's track, so you have the.
Peter's track is the third, is the thirty acres, but I'm talking about the two fifty one.
Yeah, but if we add it, we can add to the Peter's track, or qualify.
But what's the buffer zone there between where they're gonna be allowed to?
They still have to have the, the house, what is it, how many yards from the house?
Any, any property where they allow hunting, and it's three acres here, they don't take out the house, I mean, they have a buffer zone around it that they're not allowed to hunt, but the three acre property allows them to, allow them to be.
That, that's my question, if you, if you exclude the area that's, for, for want of a better term, is gonna be populated, you, are you gonna fall below the three acre?
Sorry, I thought I answered that.
No, you don't take out the house.
The effective amount of huntable land would be less, but when you consider it as available for hunting, they consider the entire property.
Oh, it's cause I was reading a document, the, the one sentence that jumped right out and grabbed me, walkers are urged to be cautious. I, I, I mean, so that's one thing, if we're talking about Peter's track, where nobody's gonna be walking, you know, that's another thing about that area that we purposely are gonna put people.
If there's trails there, how do we know people aren't gonna be walking? I mean, we're gonna have to tell people
Well, my understanding is that this is.
When the hunting is going on, that you're not allowed to walk through Peter's track.
Which is what they do have.
Walkers and hunters coexist, I mean, like county parks, they're, I've seen guys go in the woods of Bowes and mountain biking there.
And it's certain, they're only allowed certain time, right, it's six thirty to nine thirty in the morning, and then two thirty to Sunday. And it's just Monday, Wednesday, Friday, right, so you still, you know, it's not, you can schedule around that.
It shouldn't sign.
And there's a buffer, I, I don't forget what it is, but there's sometimes.
Hundred fifty feet, yeah.
How many, three hundred?
One fifty.
One fifty, that they can't be near the house.
From a building.
Elevated tree stand, it's, you know, it's, it's a relatively safe.
Thirty five, well, elevated tree stand, these people are trained not to try to even take down a deer further than thirty five yards. So, because the, the problem with that is that you could wound the deer, and then the deer would escape, and that would be worse. But to come back to your, your safety issue, we talked about that, and we put that phrase in there, uh, because we know people would be walking, and they might be walking, and they should be concerned, and I mean, when you you know, it, it just seems, it, it seems logical to have some kind of caveat or warning or precaution in there in the language, so that people would know hunters might be there, and they might read the public notice a little more carefully.
Well, we know that people don't always do what's best in terms of safety.
Well, that's why you, that's why, another reason you, you have it up there, I mean, the whole reason the homeowner came and complained was because she read the pro, public notice, and she remembered something back in August, which unfortunately, the green team knew nothing about that, that said that four point four acre plot was removed. And then it turned out that it says pepper beating, we had thought it was continuum. And then when she thought, saw the public notice, then she came and said, well, what, what, what happened, so then we discussed it again, and it was removed. So it was, you know, it's good to be cautious, I think, it's, it's good to public, put things out to the public. Maybe I shouldn't talk too much on that.
No, this isn't, we're barking, so we have a relatively, actually not relatively, we have an absolutely undeveloped area in Peter's track now, it's wide. But we're talking about over time developing it for passive recreation, or some other form of recreation, and there's gonna be a lot more walkers, strollers, kids cycling, et cetera, et cetera, who knows what else will be there. And I'm just wondering whether that's a good idea to coexist with, with hunting.
How do, how do you do it in Odeon, can we let, um, Mike talk?
Go ahead, Mike. So we use the same protocols that you have for a distance from a building, which is a hundred fifty or three hundred feet. Um, and we tell the hunters, managers, you know, called hunters, that they have to maintain that same distance from any trail system. So we're moving them far enough away that we're well beyond the distance that, that an arrow would travel. Uh, and in addition to that, we said the stand be facing away from trails, so that there's no chance that there's gonna be a stray shot that, that would possibly harm any deer. And it's worked well for us, and leave the same group is doing deer management for towns, the Warren Ridge group, and they have this, a lot of this record, so. That's, that's what we.
And this would get removed every year, or at least we would consider it every year.
Yeah, that's the way it's been so far, I think, I think Alan was saying, automatically, but uh, I'm not, we're not, we're not testing.
No.
I would not be, I, I would be, so assess how this works out.
What's the length of time?
It's October till February eighteenth, I think.
It's a long period of time.
It was October eighth, I think it started, October eighth to February eighteen.
Mary, hey, um, this, the thing deer management's going after, it's in certain areas like the Great Swamp. Um, some communities, um, they may close an area for a period of time with those, uh, other areas, but, you know, they don't. But this kind of thing, and there're trails, and there's walkers, and there's people who are exploring stuff off the trails. Um, and I believe that the record has been pretty good. Um, so it's a matter of, you know, a lot of people go, and you have options, and um, I think, that I think, and Mike you're saying is that, you know, if, if there're concerns, or if there's gonna be a lot of activity, well, you know, then you, then you have to run, hunt yourself for that day, or, or you just isolate people.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Um, so what do we need to do tonight, are we gonna move to add those two parcels?
With the, emotionally.
No, the two, do we own two?
I was gonna ask, are we only doing the two adjacent to Peter's track, or could we also add the mine?
We don't own it yet.
Yeah, we own it, we own it, we can always add, I'm sure there's.
Yeah, do we own the, do we own two sixty one, are we finished with that one?
Yeah.
Oh, we do, Ed?
No, we only own two fifty one.
We don't own two sixty one, yeah.
So I would just add two fifty one.
Okay. Well, and that's the one that you have the most parking and the easiest access, so. Okay, so do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
All right, so somebody moved to add two fifty one to.
Just, so they, they're, just quick, quick question there, but they're contiguous, so how's the hunter gonna know where one begins and the other ends?
They get the maps.
They get maps, yeah, and it's kinda obvious where, because they're really two separate lots.
I'm not thinking, there's not gonna be a lot, I just wanna make sure we don't.
There's, cause councilman, there's no.
With these apps that have uh, GPS.
GPS.
And what the plot lines are and everything else.
The plot lines, okay, all right, thank you.
And actually, just the way the, the trees and the grass is, you can tell which is which.
Well, yeah, I'm frightened, but I don't know, but, but.
Once you get into, once you get into Peter's track, you're on your own. Okay, so, um, we have a motion to add two fifty one Clermont, second, um, can we do it all in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so you can tell the hunters, they've got another piece.
I'm gonna start selling a lot of orange stuff, like that, so, in the parking lot.
Orange clothing, um, okay, oh, mayor's update, that's the, where's my update? Um, on October sixteenth, I did, actually, I met with Carol Bianchi of JCP and L. Um, she kinda went through what they do, and she also mentioned they have some grants available, that we may be having, um, where our mural project may apply, so we're working on maybe doing that, and having them as a sponsor. Um, and we had on October sixteenth, the community meeting on the mural, which was downtown Burnsville, had the community. Um, and we had on October sixteenth, the community meeting on the mural, which was downtown Burnsville had the community meeting, and we had the artist there. And I think you were there, I, I think you were there too.
Yes.
And was there, I think Jeff was there, Christine, you were there, uh, Diane was there, right? Um, I thought that went, I thought it was great, it was very interesting, the way, you know, the different things she asked people to come up with, um, you know, what kinds of, what their memories, best memory of Burnsville, and all kinds of interesting, and it was, what the big theme seemed to be was a lot of the, the buildings, the library, and the cows, the cows were big. Meadowbrook Farm was a big thing of, you know, Burnsville. So what will happen, I think there were close to eighty people there, which was wonderful, it was a great turnout. Um, and what the high school is doing is their IT kids are documenting it, so someone was filming it, and they will be documenting the whole process, so that, you know, as a project, to make it into kind of a, a video of the whole process of how this comes to be, which I think is great. Um, and the art teachers were very involved in this as well, so, um, we're kind of excited about all that. But the next piece then will be taking Karen Frost, the artist, and Jillian, who's the high school art teacher. We're gonna take all those sticky notes that everybody put up and put them into a spreadsheet, so that we'll have something to look at for themes, and that'll be the next step. So, anyway, um, October twenty-second, I met with the downtown revitalization committee with the condo owners at Old Cottage Square, the ones that go from, like, the movie theater around to, um, Ron Reflect. Those are all condos now, and they were very excited and all voted unanimously to be part of the, um, Quimby Lane project. So they, to be an area in need of redevelopment. Um, they were very excited about the whole project, which was great. Uh, and also that night was the, uh, Community in Crisis had a community meeting, I think Jeff, you were there for that. Great group of speakers, a very impressive panel, I wish there were more people there. Um, cause it was, oh, you were there too, yeah, you were sitting next to me, it was just a, a really great program. Um, I hope they do more of those, it was excellent. Um, October twenty-fifth, this past Friday, I officiated at my first wedding.
Very soon.
I, yeah, we actually did it at the Burners Inn, because they were having dinner there, and it was a small group, so we just stood around the fireplace and. Um, it was very cool. Um, but one of the things, you know, when Anthony and I were looking at the ordinance, there's a hundred dollar fee for people for my time.
Yes.
I said, I don't get paid for anything I do here, so why are we charging for me to do a wedding, you know, when I'm volunteering to do it? And I guess what the, this got changed in, what they, what'd you say, two thousand?
Seven.
Seven?
Lee Honig was.
Um, when Lee Honig was mayor, and I guess he was getting a lot of requests, so they thought it would be just another source of revenue or something. But I don't know if anybody's interested in changing that ordinance, or at least to be, you know, if you live in town, you shouldn't pay the fee, maybe for somebody out of town, I don't know, it just seemed kinda silly to ask.
How about if the meal isn't that good, then?
For my time, you know, then.
It's Burners Inn.
It just seemed silly, because I don't, you know, get paid for anything else, and it's, I can always say no if I don't wanna do it. But, I don't know, just a thought. Anyway, um.
It's the optional.
Or, or that I have the option to waive it, or something, so, any comments, anybody care?
No.
You're the mayor, so.
I think making it optional, so that they, they can, if they want, they can put it in the rec fund or something for town.
Yeah, if they wanna make.
They choose to.
A donation to the banners.
Wherever they want, they could, they could designate where they want the money to go.
Yep. Um, and just to read, the RFPs for the recreation plan are due on, I guess it's Friday, is that the thirtieth?
The thirtieth is Wednesday, I thought, I thought it was the thirty-first, end of October.
Did I say the thirty-first, I can't remember, I thought I said the thirtieth.
Okay.
So let me know when they come in. Okay, um, I think that was it for me. So, what are we up to now? Correspondence, I don't think we had any, did we?
No, I didn't have any.
Uh, unfinished business, anything we haven't?
I could add one more thing to the banners.
Yeah.
Um, because, this was actually a suggestion from John McTell. There, there may be that people wanna have a particular pole, and, you know, something's conceived to be, you know, the best location or whatever, we wanna avoid that. So we're gonna have the banners placed, uh, create a random number generator, and, you know, we, we, people are not gonna be able to reserve a pole. So, we, we've thought about the logistics of how they're gonna get assigned, um, and that's how we're gonna do it.
Is there a mock-up of what these are gonna look like, and what information's gonna be on it?
Yes.
Can you see it?
Do you have it with you?
Did we present it? Yeah, I agree this meeting?
I'd like to, maybe a minute, I'll pull it up.
They're really nice, uh, actually, they came in today, do we know where they are, maybe we could get one?
I think Cheryl has it there.
Can you get one?
They're involved in the rec office, they're really involved.
Oh, they're involved.
You want me to go and go get one?
Yeah, I'd love to see one. Yeah. Okay, I'll pause for a minute here.
Don't do anything official.
Yeah, okay, we'll do anything official. Any, um, new business? Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm sure they were just in, so it means that if there's new ones, you may bill before the following year for a recommendation or a payment.
So earlier in the discussion, I think I referred to the fact that there was a letter that was sent to all council members of the mayor, Billy Anthony and Ralph, where they're copied on that. And it was the recommendation that the Public Works Committee had a series of meetings discussing Ferraro's performance, and discussing the past history that the borough has with them as well. And then we asked Doug for a recommendation, that recommendation came to us via email.
Right. But did he, did you ever have them at, at your meeting, wasn't, um?
Yes.
One of our three, one of our three meetings, they came and presented.
Okay, cause I, I knew you were waiting for that, so they did come and they addressed all the issues.
Recommendation to the full council.
Theater eviction as well as.
What's the contract on till?
It's two more years.
Two more years?
Yeah, this was the first year of three. Um, I, I, anybody have a problem with?
Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of noise around them, and it just sometimes it's good to change, change faces, like you rotate auditors, you rotate engineers.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be difficult to get out of the three-year contract without really solid data, and I'm not sure we have that anyway. Um, I don't have a problem with doing an RFP.
Is there a termination convenience or? Is there a TOC in the contract? Termination with convenience?
Uh, I don't know, what do we have in the contract? Do you need?
I don't know, I'm gonna read.
I know what the terms are. I mean, and it's good for, I think, all our professional services to, every once in a while, to.
I think it's just, good practice.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that we talked about was the fact that the experience that Bob rightly has, and John could probably elaborate more, is that it's.
Aren't they gorgeous? Like, I'm sorry, Christine, but.
World War Two.
Isn't that beautiful? That is magnificent.
We actually have veterans from, uh, one from World War One, we've got from World War Two, Korea, and. Very well done. The stars signify, on the bottom, there's, there's stars, there's also medals that.
I see that.
Yeah, can you hold, hold that sign, I'll roll.
Purple heart.
I can get, yeah.
Silver star, bronze star.
They're beautiful.
Very well done.
And the dates refer, their dates of service?
Dates of service?
Yeah.
But we rely on our professionals to tell us, hmm, who's working and who's not, and if you both are happy with them at this point.
I think also that, you know, there is, there's a lot of noise, as you referred to, and, uh, John, but I think we need to separate noise from facts as well, and make sure that when we're making a decision, what we do, we're, we're, it's fine for us to hear everybody's concerns, whether that's their opinion, or their idea, whether it's, you know, just the way they feel, I think we should definitely listen to what everybody has to say. But then I think we took that information away, and we met, uh, you know, repeatedly with our staff, we met directly with Ferraro Engineering, and the, the Public Works Committee were satisfied that the recommendation that was presented to us was the appropriate recommendation. We'll bring it to the full council for your consideration. Did you wanna say something else, Doug?
Yeah, I just, one of the points I wanted to make is that we had the issue with the soil. Uh, Ferraro does not do inspections on our, our construction projects, and we do that in-house. So they're not on site, and the soil's being brought to the site, okay, they're not on site after it's put down, to see if it was done properly, we do that in-house, so.
What about the Conti property, were the utilities supposed to be varied there, where they're actually above ground utilities?
That was actually the water company.
And Ferraro Engineering's involvement in that is that they do, they, they inspect for the certificate of occupancy during phases of construction.
That's correct.
But they don't, they're not out there on a daily basis observing or supervising the construction.
What happened with that, the plan actually had the water underground, the water company came and said, no.
We don't do that.
We're not doing that anymore, and, you know, there was this big silver box, they, Conti wasn't, had, nobody was happy about it, but the water company is a utility that gets to make that decision.
Well, the Board of Adjustment's looking at whether or not they'll be eligible for a variance, right?
Uh, only into how they're going to disguise it. Yeah, they don't get to, you know, like.
If he work, he doesn't do it, or kind of.
Water company will move it. So he's gotta get a variance to.
More than pissed off when that changed.
Describe how they can camouflage it somehow.
Yeah, he's already submitting the plans to the Board of Adjustment, so professionals are reviewing those plans. And can I just say that my interaction with Ferraro is a daily basis, on Board of Adjustment and planning board applications that are ongoing or are being, um, constructed, and, uh, I've never had a problem with it. Uh, Bob is very efficient, he knows this, this borough inside out, and that's, that's something that you, you don't get all night. Plus the fact I've worked, I worked for, 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 uh, fifteen years, so I'm just checking that box with, with other people.
The other thing that came up in the meeting was that, that there were some things that, as a process, we could improve on, right?
That's true, we're an internal process, and, and a part of the, the analysis was looking both at Ferraro's, uh, responsibilities, and then our borough responsibilities, and we asked for an updated process for our own internal staff to follow as well, so that's still pending, right?
Correct. And Steve's point about the soil is a very good one, it's become a new thing. Uh, we, we've had, I've done twenty, twenty years worth of projects with Bob, I've been doing this for thirty years, we've never had an issue with soil. This is a new thing.
But for the other council members that weren't privy to why this soil situation has changed, can you elaborate on why the soil's different now than it was in past years?
Sure, it used to be you'd go, uh, someone would go to the farmer's field, you'd strip the top soil off, and you'd import, you'd, you'd move it out. And kind of find by now, they're doing that right now, what used to be a field, for stripping this beautiful, dark, organic soil, and I would love to be able to truck that into Burnersville and put that up on our, our roads. But they manufacture soil now, they start with the leaf compost.
Sorry, but the reason they don't take it off the farms anymore is why?
I don't know if they're not allowed to, um, there are pesticides, there are things in, in, in the soil now. Doug, I don't know if you have a good understanding of why they can't take it off right now, I mean, we're running out of them for, for one thing. Uh, there aren't as many of these, uh, you know, if they're farms, they wanna keep their soil themselves, um, but that material's just not available the way it used to be. So now the, the material's manufactured, it's leaf and twigs, composted, with a little bit of sand and other dirt put into it. And those leaves, uh, get picked up like we do, with either a front-end loader scraping it off a road, or with a vacuum leaf collector, you're picking up bottles and cans and other stuff, and they have to screen it. Uh, the DOT spec, uh, allows you to have, um, half-inch size material, I believe, half-inch, inch, uh, so, so they put it through a screen, so it allows some things to come through. You get topsoil from any of our, um, your local places, I got it from Hoffman Supply down in Long Valley. After a little while, it was little pieces of ceramic and glass that are making their way through the screens. Now, we got a bad load, uh, we, we figured that we got a load of soil that was, they grabbed the wrong pile, they grabbed the source pile, not the screened pile, because we went up to Nature's Choice in, uh, West Orange, and the pile that they were going to give us as a replacement looked, looked fine, I would have gladly put it in my yard. But all the soil is, is manufactured now, so there's gonna be, um, uh, the need to test the soil, the New Jersey Clean requirements that Steve referred to are good standards that we probably need to incorporate into our specification in one shape or form, but that's not the spec that we were dealing with on all of the road jobs that we've had before, when you brought in topsoil.
Thank you.
I know.
Yeah, and it's, it's statewide, I mean, you keep hearing this, matter of fact, the DEP, I think it was DEP, sent us some sample resolution, or ordinances to up our requirements and have checklists for all the people that are supplying soil.
So, so, and I, you explain that by email or by letter, um, but have we ever just sat down with Steve and had the conversation just like you just had with us?
Several times.
Yes, yes, I've had with Steve also.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. New business, anybody?
I'm sorry, but Doug was asking for a decision by the council, if we would take a recommendation to continue with the current contract as it exists with Ferraro Engineering.
Anybody?
I think we should.
Are you good?
I say no, but, you know, it's just me.
Okay. Yes. I think we have a consensus, do you need a resolution, do we need a?
No, because it's an ongoing contract.
Right, so, you're, yes, and thank you for putting the time in to write something up for us, um, and that's why we have professionals. Thank you. Um, so any new business? Yes?
So now I do wanna introduce the concept, uh, what I'd like to eventually bring to the group as a, as a potential or proposed ordinance. But this has to do with, uh, creating an ordinance related to commercial property that's either vacant and abandoned, or require registration of that. So I have, actually, over the months, talked to, um, Borough Council, um, and incorporated some of the legal, potential legal objections to this. There are such ordinances around the state, they would encompass what the definition is, require registration, allow inspection, and require insurance. Uh, we have this for, for residential property, but not for commercial property, it's worth noting, actually, under these best practices, that number sixty-five is, does your municipality actively maintain an inventory of buildings and vacant properties? We, we don't really do have that, uh, the, the goal for this would be to.
I think, Jeff, do we have that?
And banks are obligated to send, uh, Anthony, every time there is a foreclosure or a pending foreclosure. So we have, we have those for residential properties, I don't think that.
Well, there is no list for.
Anything for commercial.
So the goal, the goal here would be to, uh, preserve the tenant's integrity, to increase our safety, and to frankly incentivize owners, uh, through the registration fee. And I've, I've talked to Jeff and Renee about this, I've talked to, to Jack, I've talked to Chad, the Chair of, of the Housing and Zoning Committee, will take this through that committee and come back to, to the group.
I think it has to go to Planning Board too, right?
Uh, probably, but I think, you know, it, it's illegal, it also, I, you know, Jack.
By zoning ordinance.
It what?
Probably police power ordinance, not a zoning ordinance, you could refer to the planning board for it.
Does it have to? It just requires registration, it doesn't require planning board.
Does not.
No, but I, I think legally, we should do some more research on it, because I'm just a little concerned about how, you know, how enforceable it is.
Yeah, I thought we discussed this a while back, it was just, uh, difficult to do.
Brought this up like a two meeting, twice.
Apparently it was, uh, Jeff had relayed to me some communications, uh, from before I was on the council, and I think the, the holdup is, I understand from Jack, is that you don't wanna have something that's perceived to be punitive, and, and that's the sole purpose of it. The way we've, I've worked this, at least on some draft language, borrowed heavily from Bound Brook, which has such an ordinance, um, it, it's, it's not intended to be punitive.
That's a pretty hefty fine in there.
Yes. Well, actually, it's, it's, it's no more than maximum that the state allows.
Well, shouldn't housing look at this first?
Yes, um, so let's have a.
Is it housing though, or?
Yeah, it's housing and zoning, it's the whole zoning committee, because it's, um, they're, it's all one ordinance, actually residential and commercial, isn't it? So it's just.
Well, no, right now, we just have residential.
So we need to.
But I mean, there, there are some, uh, commercial properties that have residential in them, but.
Right.
The, the one that I talked to Jeff about was, was Mastrop.
Actually, most of our, uh, Old Cottage ones are, have residential, the ones that are downtown.
And I think, and what I, of course, I've finalized, right, it's, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but I think we could consider them a separate, you know. You know, there's a, there's a residential zone and there's, there's the commercial zone. You'd like to handle differently.
But Mastros itself has been vacant for two years.
Well, it's undersaled. I mean, it's in the process of being sold, so.
Well, the four apartments upstairs, they're regularly inspected.
Right. Do we inspect, you know, if there's a vacant storefront, say, um, do you still inspect them?
Not from a zoning and housing standpoint, but the fire marshal.
That's what I meant, yeah, for fire issues or make sure, do we look at for their insurance? Do they make sure they're properly insured? Should there be a fire or?
Uh, the fire marshal's process, I don't know whether it includes Steve having a copy of the, the owner's insurance for the property. Glenn, do you think it is?
I know that we make them register, so I would have to look on our registration forms.
I don't think he does.
Are we allowed to ask for a certain amount of insurance? Just curious.
Well, so, so Jack and I talked about that. And his, uh, his first impression was we can't compel someone to have insurance. However, we have a certain liability as, as the borough. So if somebody were walking by the old gun shop and that building fell down, collapsed on them, we're gonna end up with a liability. So that's the reason to compel them to have some liability insurance. And he agreed that that would be a feasible argument.
I would think if they're on, you know, even if they had a tenant, they'd have to have insurance. No, I don't know.
Right.
Well, usually the tenant is provided.
But these are abandoned properties.
The tenant does.
And these attach to, would just offset our administrative costs. Cause getting punitive, obviously, so you have to find some justification for them.
Right.
Correct.
But I don't see how you can, you know, how do you determine that the person is deliberately leaving it vacant? And they aren't, I mean, they've got it listed with their realtor, they're trying to write it.
Doesn't matter, they're not trying hard enough. I mean, they think the outcome here, the outcome metric is, is it occupied or not? And if they, if it isn't occupied for whatever reason, they haven't kept it up or they haven't lowered the rents or whatever the case may be, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna have to pay that registration fee after, I would propose, have been the definition of what the, if vacant or abandoned.
So Jeff, you indicated that you modeled it after, was it Bound Brook?
Correct.
Are there other, you know, towns that you are aware of that have a similar type of ordinance?
Yeah, but they're not as comprehensive. Actually, Bound Brook has had something in place since two thousand seventeen, I believe it was. So they're, they're, they've actually had the best, at least to my knowledge, the best track record. I'll find out some more.
Well, I think actually this is really committee work, so let's get it to the Housing Committee because I, you know, sometimes we end up doing committee work, which we.
Well, committee is a good, that she doesn't meet. Um, it's after our next, our next meeting. So I'll just do that through email. I've already talked to Chad about that and he's agreeable to doing it, by the way. The committee, the committee didn't even meet last time because we didn't have a core. Only Chad and I showed up. So we don't have, we don't have a viable committee.
They didn't send out reminders, for one thing. Uh, Sam always used to send out a reminder. So I can't forget on Chad to send out reminders. Uh, cause now we have a new person on there, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Which is good. I think it's the three o'clock thing that gets people. Um, okay, so any other new business? Uh, open session, anybody from the public want to? Bob? Here he comes. How are you?
Make this quick. Um, I want to thank the council. I know, I know Christine.
Just your name and address.
What?
Name and address for you.
Oh, Bob, sixty-one Alcott Avenue. Right. That's a key part of this town. Um, the Sustainable Jersey, we got our certification. But I want to thank the council and John and Ralph and everybody in town who helped make that possible. And some people even don't know what that means. So I thought I'd give you a quick thing, what does it mean? Okay, we've got a hundred and sixty points, so we got over the bar. We're certified as a sustainable town in the next three years. And we can get grants and we can publicize it. But what did we do? So the biggest thing is the green team does public education. We got a lot of points for that. We do stuff at the library all around town. We did the fleet management, which shows that our fleet in Burnerville, our carbon footprint that the borough owns is going down significantly. Um, we do the e-waste, is the free trees, the well testing. We, the borough supports the open space plan that gets into the master plan. We have a tree ordinance, shade tree commission, environmental commission, natural resource inventory. We have an adopt a park program. We have a community garden, we have a farmer's market, and we do deer management. So all that together, we get just enough to say we're sustainable. If you take Woodbridge, New Jersey, they do about two hundred things, but they're a big town and we're just this little municipality down here. So we did this all with volunteer people. So we're gonna be very proud of ourselves. So I can't make it to Atlantic City. Um, so this is our fourth time that we've got a program. My daughter's getting married, I'm not asking you to marry my daughter. But that's more important than me going to Atlantic City. So hopefully as many people can go down to pick up the award, I appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your committee does and for chairing that and keeping everything organized and moving along. Um, and I forgot to add, today I met, I also met with Joanna and some of the environmental committee people. Um, the, the study that we funded, we have the, the draft plan, which is really interesting about, uh, it's the impervious cover reduction action plan with some great ideas for different places for rain gardens and things that will help clean the water before it ends up in our rivers and streams. So I'm very impressed with the Rutgers consultant. He was really super knowledgeable and will be coming to the borough with, they'll, they'll be coming to the borough with some projects that they want to do. Easy, simple, not expensive, but for, I think we're gonna start over here with the pond where that water runs down from two oh two and kind of do a little swale to get it into the drain so it doesn't go right into the pond. So it was really, a really impressive study, well worth the, the funding for it, so. Um, anybody else from the public want to be heard? No? Okay, so I will close the public session and we do have an executive session. Will we be coming back or no?
I don't have anything to be coming back for.
Okay, so.
I'm not.
So do I have a motion for executive second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are going into closed session.